And we are quote-unquote live. I don't know if anyone in the audience is currently here. I was just sort of there.
So, good evening. This is the planning board meeting on November fifteenth. I'm going to begin with a roll call for the planning board. Alden Clark?
Here.
Beth Delaire was not here. Bob Coe?
Here.
Jim Pennington?
Here.
Heather Rogers?
Here.
Charlie Pomisano?
Here.
Jen Lusteen?
Here.
Brian Dalton?
Here.
And Rick Kanger here. So we have Edith Gordon. So, six of our seven members and both associate members present. Before going into the joint public hearing, I would like to take one item out of order, which is the public hearing for the city of Newburyport at three eighty-eight High Street, also known as four forty-seven Merrimack Street, Lower Act and some common. There is a site manager application that's been continued from the September twentieth meeting, and there is a request to continue this meeting to the December sixth meeting. Could I have a motion to continue the meeting to December sixth?
No, to continue?
That's your second.
Second motion.
You're all here, so we do not need to have a roll call. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
We oppose. Okay, thank you. Now for the planning board, I will open the joint public hearing on ordinance one sixty-four regarding updating multi, well zoning mapping moment and updating multifamily use definition. And open, turn it over to the chair of the planning and development committee to open your portion of the meeting.
Great. Should I talk super loud because we're going into the hour?
I think it's okay.
Okay. So, yeah, welcome, everybody. I'm Ed Cameron. I'm the chair of the city council's planning and development committee, so I'll call our portion of this public hearing to order. I'm joined by Councilor Mark Wright, he's on the committee. I believe Council Preston may be remote, but I can't see that right now. The director could tell me.
He is coming in as a panelist now.
Okay, great. And this is also posted as a committee of the whole, so we have Councilor Donahue, Ward two, Council President Shan, Ward three, Council five, Ward five, Council LeFalle, and that large council, for Tom, and there's nobody else on the, uh, remote. I think that's still, uh, correct.
Okay. Director Port, could you introduce this?
Yes, I'm sorry. If you wouldn't mind, just for a moment, I don't know if you, uh, I don't know if we're going to take everyone because we're having an issue with the screen. Our lovely IT is, uh, so I'm just trying to make sure that we can see people on the screen first, so I apologize for that.
Okay. I don't really have anything formally to take.
All right. Sorry. They were maybe just wanting, it was working fine a second ago, and as usual, it just kind of went out, so.
Rick, was there another continuing session?
There is, but since I've already opened the hearing, I don't want to not close the hearing and go back to that.
We've had two of these hours die recently, and I've been advocating for years to come with better equipment, so I'm not going to have that happen, so we're, uh, roll calling along. Yeah, no.
So we all have lots of paper that we can look at related to the item that we discussed today.
I guess I can take it down with this pause to acknowledge that we have received, I think, three written comments. One from Jared Igerman, one from Councilor Shree Seed, and then one that I think may have just come in this afternoon from Novak Nigetich. No, you're right. The one's from Councilor's new getting out, Jared Igerman, just, sorry.
Let's read them.
Yeah. I can actually spend this time just, you know.
Yeah. I'll get it out and look on here. But yeah, that'd be great.
The one from Councilor's new, the one from Councilor's seed, the one from, I know that Nigetich just posted in a line with, so I'm here for you, Jared.
Yeah.
I'm going to say, Jared.
Okay. Sorry for the delay, folks. Feel free to advocate for better equipment in our rooms if you're, um, so, here's, all right. All right, so is it okay with the chairs? So, sorry. My name is Edith Gordon. I'm the director of planning and development. I'm only speaking briefly, and I, some of you know that I talk fast, so I'll try to talk slower, but I'm here to provide a brief overview of what we discussed tonight with the zoning change. There's a couple of components to it, I'll summarize a couple of salient points to it, and then leave it, you know, if you have questions from there, we can sort of take it from there, obviously, you know, with public comment deliberations. Also with us is Lisa Mead and Scott Brown, who are involved with the development specifically at the global site, part of which this zoning change directly affects. So I'll speak a little bit briefly to that, and then they may want to, uh, to speak a little bit to the development scheme of the site, which is obviously substantive to what we're discussing this evening. So feel free, you know, to the chairs if you want to interrupt me, but I'll run through this, and then if there are questions, you can sort of take it from there. So, what we'll see, a little bit of context and background, there are two parts to the zoning change that are being discussed here. One is the map change specifically affecting the High Street and State Street properties of the old Global Gas Station site that I think we're all familiar with. The other one is actually an update to the multifamily use definition. They're integrated here in one amendment. It actually came up in part as we were discussing this global site, but the change of the multifamily definition, I'll be first myself, I think there's only administrator usually, but we've had some discussion about this. There's benefit, I think, in allowing a change to that definition that not only impacts the ability to do something better at this particular site, but also provides better flexibility for applicants who are submitting to the board, either ZBA or the planning board, for other sites where there might be multifamily. And so the change to that multifamily definition that allows essentially smaller structures may be comparable across as a city and not just with respect to the particular site. The purposes, again, just as a summary, one is specifically as it pertains to the global site, just to facilitate the redevelopment, and I use the term viable, meaning something that actually is marketable and applies to zoning with the global site. So that's something that we have to combine, is what's viable under zoning today, what would it take to make something viable? So I'll speak a little bit to the establishing consistent R three or residential three zoning district at the four corners of that intersection that we're at, and I'll have a couple visuals and maps to show you. And then also, let me just move this block, allowing flexibility for, as I said, reduced massing of the structure within a multifamily use, and we'll see that specifically as it pertains to the global site and how that works on this particular potential development. But as you'll see here, I think one of the rationales for changing that definition or providing an update to it is the current definition actually mandates not only that applicants come to the city's boards with a singular structure, depending no matter how many units are in that multifamily, but also prohibits the boards themselves essentially from approving or allowing something that has smaller structure that might actually effectively reduce the massing or the appeared massing to the neighborhood, to the butters and so forth. So there's benefit, I think it allows some flexibility there in having smaller, several or two smaller structures, let's say, rather than one large one. So with respect to like a global site itself, this is a snapshot of the site most of us are familiar with, but you kind of get an idea. This site doesn't really fit, if you will, with the High Street corridor, either the use that was there or the aesthetics of it. And it's the, it's both the corridor of High Street, the overall neighborhood, and it will be referred to as a streetscape appearance. The two images here, this one and the following one, are both just illustrate a little bit of what we more typically have along the High Street corridor, at least in close proximity. The High Street zoning, which I'll speak to in a minute, is, was, was established in large part to try to protect some of the larger estate properties from being subdivided, broken down, and changed in their character. And I'll speak to that a little bit, in part because we're talking about changing the High Street designation for this particular parcel, or two parcels together, into a R three zoning, like the other three quarters for the intersection. So some of the context here, again, I'm not going over everything, and I realize that, so if there are questions, you know, let me know. I'm not intending to go over all the background that folks bear, you know, or any or anything you get in the weeds about, but there was a determination essentially of blight, you know, without, we're using a sort of a simplifying term, that they don't like gas station, nothing was happening with it, the landowner wasn't doing anything with it, and there wasn't any near-term plan to do anything with it. So there was some concern expressed about essentially the concept of blight at that location and its impact on the city and the neighborhood. It's a very prominent location coming out of the downtown, so clearly has some effect there. And that was raised as a concern by the city council. The landowner, Global, was brought in, had some discussions with the city council, and agreed to essentially go back and remove what are listed as item three, which is removal of a deed restriction that Exxon had placed on the property. This is not a typical of gas stations or those who operate gas stations, but a deed restriction that would prevent residential uses from being on the site because they were concerned about future liability, should there be any contaminants and, you know, whatnot. Oil spills and things like that are not necessarily a gas, well, not a thing uncommon. So that was, it's a typical kind of low-plate things. You might see the attorney wanting to put in deeds to make sure they protect themselves' liability years down the road, bringing that sort of a clawback, you know, for a future issue that arises. So there were a couple of things that were going on here. There are two things that are sort of inconsistent with the path that we've all, whatever we've all, I say the city and multiple city officials have talked about, in the city council's context. We've all, quote-unquote, talked about changing the development of this site from the old gas station, which is actually abandoned use, still under viable as use, to residential use, and in order to get there, there are a few things that were encumbrances or problems in getting there. One was the Exxon deed restriction. It was actually inconsistent with the zoning that called for, only, really, and then there was also the deed restriction with permitting that use, but also the zoning itself has some constraints, we'll go into item four. I do want to just pause on my bullet number two, which is that, like I said, the commercial use of that gas station was abandoned, you know, it's been over two years, abandoned. Residential zoning was in place, and use variances in the city are prohibited, so it's not like the landowner coming into the zoning board appeals and ask for a variance to have a different use at that location, like, you know, a gas station or something like that. So number four, this is some of the stuff that's relevant to the zoning and why it may make sense to change the zoning designation here. The property itself today, and I have some visuals to show the local property and the map, the zoning maps that relate to it, but it basically has one-third of the area that would be required just for a single, single-family home. And that's kind of suggests right there that the zoning may not necessarily be comparable to what is necessary to have what we want. It got swept up in that larger High Street residential building district change, but it's not necessarily like the larger parcels that were the intention, I think, of that zoning district, was intended to protect these larger state properties, whereas this one is actually a relatively small property at the corner. And so there are a few others that are sort of at the corners of streets along the High Street corridor, and there might be some debate about whether those are still in the same character of those larger High Street estates. And here we can see it presents some potential problems for having a viable residential development. So if a smaller corner, like I said, about twenty thousand square feet, a little over maybe, but effectively it would require a pretty substantial variance in area, never mind other dimensional requirements, which I'm sure the landowner reps can speak to, but just land area alone, pretty substantial variance, I would say, for the zoning board appeals to be asked to grant a variance of that difference, twenty thousand square feet down from, you know, down from sixty thousand square foot requirement, just to have one single-family home in that district. And that's not criticism of the district, it's just to say that on this particular lot clearly indicates that you wouldn't really have viable use unless you were petitioned by ZBA, the zoning board appeals, for a pretty substantial portion of a RE, something disproportionate, I would say, than the sort of normal ratio that it might look at. The, it was, another thing that's interesting to note about this, and I'll speak to it with some visuals, is this parcel was actually R three or zone R three prior to two changes that happened in recent time, one of which was the High Street residential zoning. Like I said, there are two sub-districts of the High Street district, one is A, one is B, the one that we're talking about here, it happens in the A district on the east side of the city, but our High Street corridor. But that High Street change happened in two thousand seventeen, and the downzoning of the R three district happened in two thousand eighteen. And what we'll see here in these subsequent slides is just the effect there, where effectively what we're talking about now is reverting it back to the R three designation, and in terms of the map change, the R three designation that it had before those two things happened in relatively recent years. So this is, I realize you can't see all the scale of this, you know, and we can zoom in or take a little greater look at here in detail if you both want, but this is the zoning map of the city prior to those changes happening, prior to the R three downzoning to R two. What I'm noting here, I think is worthwhile just to note on this map, is what you see is this darker sort of, I won't say orange maybe color, here and here and here extending out of the downtown. That was the R three district at that time. You'll also notice that there's, there's a relatively continuous, I'll add some pink or orange color here on High Street, there's no High Street special district that's been created here just yet along this quarter. So that's prior to those two changes. After those two changes in seventeen and eighteen, we see here, what you'll notice is the, the larger R three has been reduced in size, and it's now, it's a little bit harder to see, but, and I have a blow up of this, but it's right down here, close to the downtown. So there's a relatively small R three district at the left after, from what was originally R three. Also, you'll notice that there's this darker green right in here and this blue color, and that, those are the two High Street sub-districts, so the B, High Street B and High Street A, and it's the High Street A to this corner that we're looking at, and I'll pull to a blow up of that. So that's the, those are the two notable map changes or zoning district changes that have actually, in essence, what we're talking about here is reverting back for this particular piece of land, that change, back to R three, which is where it was some years ago. This is just a blow up of three maps for comparison purposes, maybe help a little bit more. What you're seeing here in the circle is the location of the lotting question, so that's the global site right at the corner. This is High Street right here, and all three maps, they're essentially the same layout, so slight, slight different appearance of the colors, but they're basically the same thing. What you're seeing is High Street, you're seeing State Street, and you're seeing the downtown in this area here, waterfront, I think waterfront right there with the central payment, that's Route one. So what you're seeing here on this far left map is before the residential three downzoning to R two, and before the High Street residential A was adopted, which, which we have this area right in here, that's the blue that we're seeing on the second graphic. That's what it looked like before, it had all four quarters of this intersection extending out were R three residential district. Well, after that, those two changes happened, we saw that this quarter was effectively a High Street designation along with the land over here, and you see the R three has also been reduced, you can see it doesn't quite extend over here the way it did previously. The orange colors changed slightly in these graphics, but it's the same district we're talking about. And then in this graphic here, what you'll notice is this is what's being proposed here, essentially is just that tiny little, you know, if you will, parcel on the zoning map, reverting back to the R three that it was at the other three quarters are today at that corner, so it isn't necessarily even a change from something we had before, it's actually reverting back to something as opposed to something entirely new per se. The, a couple of things to note, and I, there was a communication, I think it was earlier early, there's some communication that we got, I, it sounded like not everybody received it, so I think I'll send out tomorrow morning that communication, but to make sure everybody in the council and the planning board has seen it, but Council Ragman, former Council Ragman, had commented on a couple of things, one of which, I just wanted to make sure there's clear understanding of a few things, wasn't sure of a hundred percent of the things that never were clarified. So one thing is multifamily use is not something that's as of right, you know, anywhere, so multifamily uses are all by special permit, and I say discretionary, meaning the board has to decide if the use is appropriate at that location as part of that special permit. There, you know, granted, there's, you know, typical thing to evaluate, there's pays on, things like that, but in essence, the board itself has a fair amount of latitude to determine whether something is, is reasonable at its location as part of the local permitting process. That typically happens after the zoning is in place. Here, what we're talking about, and this is a little bit more complicated at this location in terms of the map change and as it pertains to this particular site, is unique in the sense that we're now upfronting a lot of detail about what might happen at this site down the road, partly because before making a map change to the zoning district, we're actually interested in railing down some of the details. And so that's where a so-called development agreement comes into play, and I'll speak to that in a few minutes, but even after, you know, a development agreement is in place, and I'll speak to what's in there, and even after the zoning, you know, where it takes place as a, as a map change, the applicant certainly can come in for firmly before the zoning board appeals for a discretionary special permit to allow the multifamily use at the location, and that allows all aspects of the project to be considered, in this case by the zoning board appeals, and the board that will review that. They can review it, they can do peer review, which means they can hire consultants to look at various actics of the project, whether it be stormwater, traffic, things like that, if there are any concerns. That's something that they, just like the planning board can do as needed. They don't need any special legislation beyond what the state has already provided. They, I also would note that other than the districts that I've listed here, multifamily is prohibited in other districts, and excluding the four-yard district, I should say, that's a special district where both the city and the state were essentially allowing as of right multifamily, subject of various different design standards and a plan reviewed by the planning board, but that's a special district down by the train station. These other districts in which multifamily is allowed are somewhat limited, actually, if you look at the map, and I can look back at the map, but they're limited in area and scope, and that's one thing I think to keep in mind here as well, as we talked about changing the definition of multifamily and where the implications might be, that was something I think the council would be, had commented on earlier today in an email communication to some of the planning members, the, the locations in which this multifamily is allowed is actually also limited as well, because something to keep in mind, that's the R three, so residential three district we're talking about, the B one and the B one district being sort of the Story Avenue area down by the traffic circle, Route one traffic circle, the B two and the B three essentially being our downtown, and then the I two, which I'll point out in a second, is a, is a special industrial district with a sort of contemplation of a longer-term adjustment, you know, when you think about the personal site on Merrimack Street. And then we have the waterfront independent and waterfront mixed use district, which is essentially along our waterfront. So those are the limited areas, if you actually look at the areas that are available, and also keep in mind that some of these areas are largely built out, have historic buildings and other regulations in place that would like to include demolition of things that are there and so forth. So there'll be implications or the potential for, you know, widespread use of something that's sort of outlandish is somewhat managed, I would say, in part because of that. So like I said, the ZBA would review the use of multifamily. I would also note here that the planning board has site plan review when a project has five or more units. So here in the context of this particular site and the global site and what's being contemplated for this site, I would say that's not actually a trigger here because what's being contemplated is actually four units that's below that threshold, and I think that's a relatively decent threshold, you know, more appropriate for the site than something higher. But if it was a five-unit project in a multifamily category, that would also require the planning board review in addition to designing work of appeals for the use itself. I'm not necessarily convinced, I'll just speak myself, I'm not necessarily convinced that a site plan review creates additional, you know, substantial benefit to the process sort of speed or leverage to get a better result per se, given that the special permit itself, the ZBA, is a discretionary permit, and they have a fair amount of latitude for that, I would say in some ways more than this site plan review process itself. So this is that zoning map, and like I said, the, the areas that multifamily is allowed are essentially the downtown right in here, that's our B two and B three are these red areas. We have the B one, which is the Story Avenue and the traffic circle, and then we have our waterfront mixed use, which is right along the waterfront there, that blue you're seeing, and then this light green that travels across the edge of the Merrimack here a little bit, on the frontage of the government waterside, that's the waterfront independent district. So those are areas where it would be allowed. If you, if you look at the maps like I have, and sort of zoom in on them and see what's there, you, you recognize in the downtown, there's not a whole lot of room to sort of demolish historic buildings and place a bunch of multifamily buildings and whatnot, so there's somewhat limited scope or availability to do certain things. That being said, a couple of other things to note, the question that was also raised in the comment today, potential non-residential uses are allowed. The category I think that might be of particular concern, and I'm certainly saying for myself as a land use planner, is I don't think it would be appropriate for essentially traffic-generated uses to happen at this given site. That's probably due to the, the intersection we have there at High Street and the close proximity of driveways that might be there, for instance. So when we think about the fact that retail trade or retail services might be allowed in the R three district, you know, as they are already, that's by discretionary special permit only, and, and I, certainly if I was commenting to the zoning board appeals on some application in which someone opposing a commercial use like a retail trade or retail services, I would be advocating against allowing that use or suggest that's an inappropriate use, and partly because of two of the findings that the zoning board appeals would have to make. The first one, number three of their list, being that there's, you know, not creating undue traffic congestion, I think that I put emphasis on that, I think that would be an inappropriate location to have traffic-generated uses. We wouldn't necessarily want to have a gas station re-open there again, for instance, I don't have the gas, people like myself, as opposed to others here. The other thing is whether or not it's impairing the character or integrity of the district or the adjoining districts like the High Street next door, surrounding district, R three district that is near. So those are the things to keep in mind, I guess, is where was pointed out that yes, there are some other things that are allowed in that R three district by discretionary special permit, however, I find it highly unlikely, and for good reason, that we would not want to allow a traffic-generated use that's, you know, non-residential on that location. This is just a schematic plan, and we'll, we'll speak a little bit further, but this is the schematic plan for development of the site. This is referenced in a development agreement that was recently, it was finalized earlier this week, distributed, and I will speak to that a little bit further in more detail, but in essence, what's being proposed here for this particular site, this is the gas agent site, what you're seeing here is High Street and State Street, and as you know, there's a long curb cut across the whole frontage here on both streets here largely, and what's being proposed here is essentially reducing all of that to one curb cut of State Street, four units that are in two structures, three of the units being in the primary structure towards the street, a fourth unit being in a secondary or carriage house style structure that you might see typical of, you know, some of the patterns of land use along High Street corridor. Part of the idea here was to break down that massing, so rather than with the typical definition of multifamily, having the developer be forced to, or having our board be forced to approve a project that has one larger building here, to allow a portion of that structure to be broken off into a separate piece that allows there to be two smaller massings. So that's where, for one reason, I think it's good to allow some flexibility on whether or not we forcibly make people do much larger structures rather than looking at the possibility through that discretionary review, which is still subject to boards of approval, multiple structures that would break down that massing, and that's effectively what is, is being attempted here, is to break down that massing. All parking is kept on-site, there's some obviously outdoors space, patio space and whatnot. There might be further, you know, adjustments to some things around addressing, you know, what are concerns during local permitting, but for the most part, as far as I can tell, there's been a fair amount of work with meeting the butters to work through some issues on buffering, landscaping setbacks, you know, things like that, and we can talk a little bit more of that. But in essence, what this is, what's proposed here is replacing the gas station structure if demolished, gas station sign goes away, banned use is taken away, and if the zoning change passes, development agreement, you know, is in place of the contract essentially, and we require adherence to this particular plan that we're looking at, you know, with, with a few variations of the, look at, but effectively, you know, where the buildings are going to be, we know how many units are going to be there, we know there's a little one driveway curb cut, you know, et cetera. So just in essence, that is what's being proposed here for this site. This is a graphic, it was provided by the, the team working on the project, just to show a little bit of the massing, we could do a similar graphic out of our G I S or mapping software, but it shows some of the massing of the structures in the area. So you see here the gas station site and the proposed structure, the primary structure and the secondary structure in lieu of the, the gas station building, which is right about here. And what you'll notice is that the, the, you know, if you have some debate about whether or not this massing is appropriate, the, the structure's not, you know, dissimilar per se to ones that are surrounding neighborhood. The more important piece, I would say, other than sort of a bird's eye view, which most people do not actually see buildings by the bird's eye view, they actually see them at ground level, so one, in addition to sort of, you know, considering the bird's eye view and how that compares to the performance of other buildings, I would actually say even more important than that is the fact that facade or streetscape length of a building here on High Street or State Street is comparable to what we're seeing sort of across the street there. These are not, you know, a typical frontages that pedestrians are going to see at ground level as they're looking up at a structure or the length of it. And that's something to consider there, you know, for instance, if we were to have a fourth unit that's added in there in a larger structure, that structure would be longer length along State Street, and one might question whether it might be better to break down that massing, and that's one of the reasons why we talk about amending the multifamily definition to allow at least the board to approve a plan that has multiple structures to break down the massing. And so that gives some context for the scale of massing what's being proposed at this site in that, that location. Just a couple of photographs, visuals of what that, you know, side looks like today, and then what we see across the street. So this is more akin, I would say, to what's being proposed here today, a residential structure, a primary one, you'd see essentially a carriage house style or structure behind it, but this is the opposite side of State Street, so as we pull back and forth, you can see sort of transitioning that side of the street to look more akin to what's happening on the opposite side of State Street. So the development agreement itself, this is essentially a preemptive contract, it's basically to establish some baseline turns as a sort of belt and suspenders, it's a little bit more detail that we get upfront prior to having zoning in place or something, and then seeing someone apply to a local board, like a ZBA or a planning board, for local permits. That would still be necessary for this development, even with the zoning change here, there'd still be need to be an application of the zoning board appeals, notice to a butters, a public hearing, review of the plans involved, but this development agreement is intended to at least define a smaller box for what could happen there and make sure it's reasonably,[1782.11] Uh but this development agreement is intended to at least define a smaller box for what could happen there and make sure it's reasonably uh within, you know, within the the confines of what's something reasonably appropriate for that area. Before we even contemplate, you know, the zoning change, and. I will speak for this myself, that I feel reasonably confident and comfortable that the development agreement, you know, with the zoning change we're talking about here. Would allow us to get to an appropriate uh, you know, form of development at this site, and and obviously I wouldn't be spending time here myself if I didn't think you were sort of in that that place. Um so some of the key elements that are included in there are a maximum of number four units. Uh for the overall development, uh no more than that, uh we had someone who came in with us uh some earlier timeframe when the goal force were looking for interested buyers. Uh someone who said, you know, can I put up six units, and then I said, I don't, you know, I don't think that's a good idea, I don't think it's going to go very far, um you know, that go up, but they didn't come back. And as you can see here, we have something I think is a little bit more appropriate in terms of the scale, at least I'll say, well, four units is a little bit more appropriate in scale. Um the main structure at three units, secondary with one, I would say it's akin to what we consider sort of a technically appropriate carriage house style secondary structure. Um something that has an agreed upon building locations, that's, you know, per this concept plan we just looked at, it's incorporated by reference. Um the uh there has to be substantial adherence to that plan going forward, uh when applications are made to the board for permitting after a zoning change is made. Um agreeing agreeing upon only having one driveway curb cut, um I felt, I'll just begin for myself, I thought it was important not to have a curb cut on the High Street. Uh moving at a relatively short distance to the intersection with uh State Street anyway. Um so I think it's probable, the plan that you have here, where there's only one of them State Street. Uh there's a fair amount of uh attempts here in the plan to provide, um you know, some standard buffer and screening to abutting properties, so. Uh they've they've worked, and I think it speaks for themselves, but they've worked to try to pull the building uh as far as they can away from abutting properties, uh recognizing the. Um sort of, you know, matching setbacks and streetscape that you typically want, you know, looking at adjacent buildings. Um also speaks to compatible architectural styles, so it notes that there would be a sort of a Victorian era uh architectural style to the structure itself. Um and then they also had made an offer, committed to twenty five thousand dollars uh to be put towards uh pedestrian signal upgrades at the intersection. Um I'll put note in the brackets here to that, that uh as we know, from the local permitting process, typically. Uh we would expect here new sidewalks, given the frontage there and the long driveway curbs, you would expect. New sidewalks on the frontage and accessible ramps, uh you know, as as part of that work there. Um those have to be, you know, accessible crossings, so that we expect that work, typical sidewalk work, um that's triggered already by our ordinances during permitting. Uh but they they've uh offered to provide some funding towards the signalization or improvement of that intersection, where we know there's some upgrades needed to the um the controls uh for uh. Uh on the pedestrian vehicles there. Um I, we have put forward for discussion this evening, um after the ordinance amendment was sponsored. Um I had had some further discussion uh with our planning board chair, and we had some further discussion about the relationship between. Uh the multi-family definition and what's contemplated here, and uh two other areas of zoning, what is consent review and. And what threshold does the planning board have a role in reviewing a project at this or some larger scale? Um as I mentioned earlier, the planning board has uh well, projects that's five or more units, this product is four. Um so it's not reaching that five threshold where a site plan review is necessary. Um we also discussed the relationship to six C, section, what we call section six C, which is a provision that um. When I got here was was dealing with multiple residential structures on a lot. Uh it was changed relatively recently, and then the the chair was uh one of the the authors of the amendments that were made to it, but. Um was produced to focus more on signaling to family homes as a as a potential area to have those uh multiple structures in. Um it it um. You because it was narrowed to sort of focus that area, what was suggested is essentially the revised language that you see in yellow here, and I would certainly refer to it because Jared wants to speak a little further. Uh but the intent here was to basically uh make it clear that you wouldn't really have a path, for instance, to this location for more than. Um you know, the the type of approval you'd be able to get from the planning board under six C, so. Um here, in effect, what happens is the planning board has a role uh in reviewing uh a project beyond, you know, the focus we're looking at here for this global site by example. Um so uh the second piece of that provision was broken out for a second sentence, just to kind of keep it easier to read, but. The additional language is just to note that uh to have that multi-family use, the original amendment that was put in uh to the council packet. Um notes that you can have one or more buildings or structures that have three or more dwelling units, however, one of those structures has to contain three more units. Um so you're kind of, you're you're setting kind of a baseline for the composition that can happen there, and again, I'll defer to the chair to listen to people a little further, but. Um but that was uh intended to make sure that we we consider the role of the planning board, triggers for other types of review, um that might be appropriate. Um uh last thing, I guess I would speak to here, and again, there may be obviously further questions, is just. Um would next steps and timeline for what we would call meaningful results being. When we think about city capital project, we think of shuttle ready project. Uh if the, if you're order to get to the gas station building coming down, you're right, the capital is in place. And the gas station site coming down, for instance, um what is contemplated here is with the development agreement, which is now in place to lock in some of the the baseline details and provide an extra belt and suspender level protection for the city and for the butters. Um with then the zoning amendment adopted by the council, you know, and I I would suggest the as amended version that we're discussing this evening. Uh that was included as an attachment to the development agreement. Um and with the uh after that, uh a subsequent special permit application and hearing before the ZBA, which includes the butter input. Then we could see potentially in the spring, the actual work done to change the character of that property from the derelict gas station to the residential uh use as being proposed here now. Um that's a just a brief sort of, it's like I sort of glossing the surface of, you know, some of the context here, but. Uh from my lens, that covers most of the ground that is, you know, in certain setting points here, but there might be other areas that you cover, folks that might have questions about. And just to expect to have sort of at least a baseline understanding, most people have at least an understanding of what's going on here. Or the relevant, you know, components or pieces of this, and the details or documents or mechanics that are involved. So if I, if there's anything, uh please let me know.
So I think uh we obviously don't want to start discussion of the of the substance of this until we first to the public, but. I think that's an appropriate time now for, there are any questions from our counselors or the planning board, that is just for clarification, if you didn't understand it. Again, not to get into discussion of the substance, but just clarification of this one.
And actually, sorry, I thank you, if if I could, there's one thing I would speak to uh in uh note very clearly, although I was referencing on the maps is. Um it was a suggestion also, uh you know, like this has come up with other zoning amendments before, uh it's always characterized correctly, but. I I would not characterize this as a quote unquote spot zoning, um as that term is sometimes used. Um spot zoning is really taking place where you have a change to a a zoning district to an area, and. You have uh a, you know, a a proposed change to something that is basically, there's no differentiation from the surrounding area in any way, there's no public purpose, it's such as you were making that change. And the reason I, and I, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, but. Part of the reason for that is, if you look at these maps here, you'll notice, first of all, there's there's a uh a a legitimate purpose for making the change, which is actually that this is a viable residential development, you actually can't do. A residential development without substantial variance or variance, as you could say. Um under the current High Street zoning, it's not possible without a bunch of variances to even have one home. Um that, with that in mind, in order the idea of being, you know, public purpose and changing the character of that site from the derelict gas station to residential use. Uh we also have this context, the fact that this, these three quarters of that intersection aren't R three today. And were, the the whole core, the whole intersection was R three historically. Um so there's nothing sort of, you know, it's not in an isolated area by itself, it's actually with full continuity to the surrounding intersection. That this property would be returned essentially to an R three district like the other three quarters, so just to dispel the rumor, the idea that some of this might be spot zoning. Um that, you you know, to throw out the term doesn't mean it's spot zoning, it has to be, you know, no legitimate public purpose for doing it, and no differentiation with surrounding properties. Um that if this property is somewhat different from the larger state properties, and I think the High Street zoning was originally sort of focused on preserving the characters relatively small uh as a whole. Sorry.
So are there any questions uh for Andy before you open up to comment? Yes, definitely.
Yeah, so um uh if you would mind going back to slide nine.
Get that to show, right, so.
So um I I get before and after, um a couple of things here, right, so. Uh it it could be argued that um. This property was, the underlying zoning was R three anyway, right, and the abandonment of the commercial use. Just revert it back to R three, right, and and so um I I think there's an argument to be made.
Uh not not that it's a reverse back to a different zoning district, but that it can't be commercial, right? Yes, yes.
So um okay, so uh that was just the point, um. The question I have really centers around, you know, what you've shown here is obviously the part of the question, right? In the context of what's greater, my question, really my. Line of questioning here is focused around um the unintended consequences of R three. And the other areas that would be impacted by this, you know, this um. Uh I I would agree with the statement that says, you know, it it's probably in our better interest to pursue something different on this corner, again. But what I'm more concerned about is the generalization of um zoning within the R three itself. And I'm unsure, and I'm unsure if we've looked at it, is the potential unintended consequences. Of the impact on R three in general, I know it's smaller, I know it's concentrated. Uh but in many ways, you know, we we had that situation not too long ago, which was a loophole, we had multiple buildings. Um on a lot, and yet they were connected by like a roof, and, you know, we 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 closed that loophole, right? Are we opening up a loophole again? And are, um although one site, you know, one building would have to have three or more buildings, we are basically. Going back, reverting back to that. And so that's my question is, haven't we looked at the unintended consequences of the impact of this particular zoning language on the rest of the R three?
Yeah, yeah, and like I said, you know, given the limited areas of impact that 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 be allowed in. Uh obviously with the discretion organized discretionary review, and if you look at, for instance, with this visually here, you can almost make out. You know, given the types of structures friends in the downtown, where multi-family is allowed with the R three. With the downtown district, for instance, there's a fair amount of structures that are there, so the idea that someone's going to be able to squeeze in a bunch of, you know, several multi-family structures. Um you know, multi-family using multiple structures is going to be pretty difficult for them to do in an area like this, for instance, if you go on the coastline, we found a similar kind of analysis. Uh but I certainly defer to planning board members, when the sheriff, they want to speak to what they figure, whether it's against an impact or not, but. Uh my sense is that that is not, there's not a significant, you know, unintended consequence that um that we need to, sorry, and I'm I'm always open, of course, to, you know, but continue discussion of that nature, but. It would would be a concern to the off the, the opposite planning development. Um and to obviously the board, the city council, if we thought that was the case, it's it's a fair discussion and concern to have. Um I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily inclined to build that something. From here, um but again, that's that's a fair discussion to have, or someone else, I couldn't have thought of that, so we'll go very further on that.
Uh a clarifying question, um so the language, the original language here, um. In in the list of allowable uses um by the whole family, hopefully. Um would be changing one or more buildings, blah, 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 on the same lot. This is technically two lots.
Uh they're they're commonly owned, so they're really good, they're going now.
Okay. So the, so the way it's. So it's one lot, it's not.
This is, yeah, this would, this uh this would be treated as one lot for permitting.
I I think that falls under the doctrine of merger, so it's kind of had to untether that. Almost.
I was thinking about the doctrine of merger. Duly noted.
Any other questions for, yes.
Um yeah, thank you very much, so. Just to kind of um condense a little bit of what we're talking about, the the main change to R three is the definition, the multi-family definition that we're allowing, um. And nothing else in terms of special permit, all the other things are still there, so in spite of, you know, going back to the unintended consequences. Special permit is still a requirement across all those districts where this definition is going to be applied.
Correct, and then that that's why I thought it was important to note that earlier, because even even aside from any particular concerns, you know, folks might have, you know, all of us might have. I care about it every time, I care about the client, but. Um but knowing that it's discretionary review also provides me, for instance, a greater level of confidence and, you know, sense that the city has a protection, because. We have boards that review these things, there's a fair amount of public input that is, you know, butters are notified. There's a review process that that uh public hearing that is had, sometimes those are continued for several nights, there's a review of what's happening. Um but that is discretionary, it's not automatic that someone has not keyed in the table permitted as a right, it's actually a discretionary permit. That's not saying that, you know, I think they would necessarily be able to get approval, but it's not an as a right, it's very different than that, it's something that has to be, they have to present themselves to the board as a product that's reasonable and appropriate for the site. And the board has to make typical findings, and it's appropriate for the site, you know, essentially for that.
And to add to that, so this definition, is it applied in other communities, and the one area that I have a question on how it's stated. And I don't know if we're getting into the content, or um I should ask the chairs, are, is this more opening up across the board, or are we focusing only on the presentation?
I think you go a little further here, because.
Okay, so um in terms of the uh, and I'll read it here, and where there is more than one unit in a building, either common floor ceiling assemblies between the dwelling units, so common wall connectors. If you could just explain, because in this, the the rendering that we looked at. There is a single structure that has multiple with the kind of common area walls, and then one that's the carriage house, so. Can you explain when we are breaking things up, does that mean that from that definition, I thought even the carriage house would not really qualify?
Uh no, actually, so uh my, what that's getting at is um, uh Council of College spoken to this uh earlier was um. It was a change, it was, I think it was a product on Lime Street that might have triggered this originally going back some years, but um. Oh, oh, here we go, um the on, what, this is, this plan is complying with that mainly because we have this long continuation of of these units being connected, if someone were basically. You know, if you're kind of, I was wondering about, you know, that that where things kind of went awry, where people are basically taking a secondary structure like this. And then putting some kind of really narrow, I mean, we might have seen something close, right, narrow reesway between them, and then saying, well, that's one structure, you know. But they're effectively sort of sneaking around it, you know, um that's the kind of thing that that uh provision that's already in the text of the ordinance was intended to prevent. And make it really a true, you know, massing or one structure itself, as opposed to someone attempting to have two separate things, to kind of, you know, just to qualify itself as a use. You know, put this little symbolic and, you know, physical connection between them. Um and that provision is not changing, that stays in here, it's just been broken out as a separate sentence, just for to make it a little easier to read that definition.
And then my last question, some of the development, the developers agreement.
Yeah.
Um are we ready to move to that, and and I'll then. Uh pause, but I think on the uh rendering that you were just at. Question on this, is this uh just a suggested, or is this pretty, the the one thing I was just wondering about the unit in the middle, like it's entrance way, or and it's just. I hope this was just a rendering that was more quickly done, because I just didn't see how unit two was. The entry point, unless I'm missing something, so I thought it was.
Yeah, there there could be flexibility for for the entrance to the unit itself, uh to your point, there could be flexibility for the entrance that's created for that unit. But the footprint, the location of this building, essentially, its proximity to the lot lines. Uh you know, proximity to the streetscape and so forth, I mean, that's basically fixed in by this plan. Um so you have some ability to maybe shift, you know, laterally along here if you need to, but you you can't, you know, move this building any closer to the lot lines essentially. Um and um it's, this was not intended to get down to that fine grain level of detail that the ZBA would typically be looking at, and our architect needs more time to develop. Um you know, in that finer grain detail, you know, typically you're not investing in a set of detail plans like that, unless you know you've got something that's, you know, in the right direction. Um and I don't know that we necessarily just speak to in this uh development agreement, this specific location of the door, per se. Um but to your point, this does not preclude the ability to have that flexibility and make sure it has a, you know, a proper entrance, for instance, and and provide some flexibility on that end. Um there was some um obviously contemplation over some private space for, you know, the residential units and and where those might be with, you know, buffering for the residential abutting properties. Um but I think that that is also contemplated here, the fact that each of these has to have, you know, proper entrances and. And exits, and um and that they might need to be some flexibility on that front as they come in.
And then questions were emailed, are you gonna, we're gonna walk through those and get some answers, so I'll you then.
Uh sure, if if the things that I hadn't already addressed, or.
No, the ones that came in, like there was some um kind of questions sent in from the butters, and I didn't know if we were going to go with them.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Because I'm just working on that, that might take a while.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Um I think there's a question.
I don't have a question, but wonder if I may offer a point of fact regarding the zoning ordinance. I don't know if that's permitted.
Why don't we do that during the discussion, following discussion? Maybe open the pocket card this way.
Uh and uh through the chairs, I I forgot to note, um with with Lisa and Scott here representing the the, that's a local developer. Um obviously, who has a. What we see here, um they also could speak more to the developers who can propose the same question along those lines there, so the burger chairs on that piece, but I I don't have my problem myself, but they they could speak to that aspect of it here. A little further, even then, obviously, I have. Got enough of the presentation per se, if I just, you know, some points maybe could make or clarifications they could make.
Point it before you do.
Um I think there's probably a few things I'd like to speak to now, um but I'll refer to you as Jared, if you're okay with that.
Probably better now, yeah.
Thank you, chairs, um and members of the board and committee, uh Lisa Mead, Lee Teller, and Costa, very great street in the report. Um and we do, Scott and I represent the diversity development LLC. And I just wanted to kind of give you some context, and then Scott's actually going to talk about how this plan was developed with working with the neighbors on um. On this plan, on this concept plan, and what his intentions are, and what, if this goes forward, what the zoning board is likely to see moving forward. Um so in a context point of view, over the last year since Global put this up for sale. I would say between six and eight people have approached me and similarly Scott about potential development on this property. And it is very limited in the current zoning that it is, um mostly given what Andy has indicated. Um in the H S R A district, you can do a single family by right and a two-family by special permit, right? It requires sixty thousand square feet of area, this lot has twenty-two thousand six hundred twenty-three square uh square feet. It requires a hundred feet of frontage, what you have to remember is this has two areas of frontage, we have two front yards here, we have State Street. And we have High Street, since State Street is the longest frontage, the rear yard is that which is opposite State Street. The rear yard setback under the H S R A zoning is three hundred feet. The side, the front yard setback, and so there are two, is seventy-five feet. So seventy-five feet from High Street is approximately to the High Street side of that building that exists there today. Okay, just to give you an idea, so because of that, it would not be pre-existing non-conforming, you would have to meet that side yard setback. You could take advantage of the um established front yard setback on State Street, because that is the main front yard. So you could use that as the established front yard setback, and technically technically move a structure closer to State Street. But you're further limited because the required minimum open space in the H S R A is eighty-five percent. The required maximum lot coverage is twelve percent. All right, so think about that. So while in some of these calculations, like the open space, you have some non-conformities because of the existing coverage. Of a hot top on the lot, you don't with regard to lot coverage, which is essentially everything under a, under a roof. Which leaves you twelve percent to two thousand seven hundred square feet for a footprint, anything under a roof. And then you have to think about what global wants people to pay for this property, and the fact that you may not put a basement. On any structure in this property, that's gonna be a deed restriction, no basement. So those are the challenges facing this, you can't use commercial, that's gone, the lots have merged. So it's one lot. So you have to think of something else that you can do with the property, and that's why the, there are so many people that have walked away. Because a lot of people don't have the stamina or the finance of finances, frankly, to go through this process. And take the risk to spend the money that would come so far now, that you would may not get a zoning change. But nothing really is gonna happen here until there's some kind of zoning change. I also want to just point out, in the R three, for those who are worried about where else a multi-family might go. The lot requirements and frontage requirements for for family, a multi-family um housing is twenty thousand square feet. With a hundred and twenty feet of frontage. All right, so aside from this lot, there's not many others, as Andy pointed out. In the R three district, if any, they're all gonna be non-conforming, so only, not only you're gonna have to get a special permit for use. You're gonna have to get a special permit for non-conformities, so those are the challenges that we went through, but understanding the sensitivity. Um around this lot and the prominence in the city for obvious reasons. Um that's why the development agreement is really important, so everybody is comfortable with what is gonna happen on this property. And that's where I'm gonna turn over to Scott, because he can tell you how he's come up with the plan.
Great, uh thank you, Attorney Mead, so so the project team has worked extraordinarily hard to get to this point, we've um. You know, uh looked at ten, uh no less than ten different uh design site plan options. Before we, you know, arrived at this plan before you tonight, and it has been an extraordinarily difficult design project. And one of the things that has made this so difficult are the site constraints, and Lisa just spoke to some of them. Uh one, we have some uh extraordinarily challenging grades here. Uh from the lowest point on on High Street to the uh point where we're proposing to come in with our our driveway, which is at the existing. Current cut to the mobile station, uh there is six feet of of grade change. Uh there are points at the site that are actually ten feet higher, yeah, higher than that. Um Lisa also also mentioned that we will be subject to a deed restriction here. Uh so one of those conditions of the deed restriction is that we're not allowed to have any living space, stored space, mechanical space. Or parking for vehicles below grade, you know, so that means that this structure needs to be elevated. Um to sort of the highest point, um so that has been very challenging to work around, and it has actually squashed sort of a number. Of uh design opportunities and certainly limited us from digging this thing into into the side of the hill. Um the other thing that's been challenging here, and we did mention this, uh this is a corner lot. Um uh it has, it's a slightly uh uh non-orthodoxed shape, it doesn't look like much in that plan. But it's caused us a number of design headaches, particularly with some of these other constraints that we're dealing with. And uh you know, if if the zoning change for this happens, um you know, we'll be subject to, you know, uh twenty foot, since it is a corner lot. Twenty foot uh front yard setbacks, and the high and state uh primary lot line will be considered State Street, so that means the rear yard. Uh as you're looking at this property from High Street, will be on the left, you know, so we'll need to be twenty feet away from that um. Uh common lot line there, further constraining um uh this project. So we've met with the butters uh multiple times, and I've considered them part of my design team. Uh they've had a profound influence on this plan before you tonight. And without their input and suggestions, we might be proposing something that's entirely different. Um in their beginning, it was their suggestion uh to pursue the pursue this sort of two-building, you know, two-building concept. We understood uh that without um with the co- zoning that currently is, that we would not be allowed uh to do this. Uh there was also a strong desire to push this building away um uh from uh. Uh towards State Street, away from the lot line with the immediate uh butter at ninety-three, uh High Street. And uh there was a strong desire to preserve uh what some consider to be the natural ridge there. And so it pulled this uh away from that common lot line, and the project is only uh uh been improved. Uh you know, because of that. Um you'll probably hear some some comments and questions about uh retaining walls and grading tonight. Um this plan has quite a few retaining walls in it. They are uh an essential architectural and landscape feature of this project. You know, we have a first floor that is going to be uh do the, you know, the extreme grading on site. We have a first first floor that is gonna be uh seven to nine feet above that lowest um elevation on on High Street. And um you know, simply without those retaining walls, uh I don't know how to address that sort of grade change in. In a very elegant manner, uh there is precedent for that, you know, saw an earlier slide uh in Andy Port's presentation of. Uh the building is directly across from this at at One Pond Street, you know, for those that that have been here, uh. For those of you that have been here for a while, this is the former sort of Knights of Columbus, uh which has a retaining wall, and uh. You know, that retaining wall goes from uh two feet um uh at its um lowest point to four feet in that corner. So our retaining walls will not be, are are no higher than this, and they're similar to this with one major change, one major difference. And that is that uh none of them are right on the sidewalk. Um like at this this property, and you know, if you go up Pond Street, there are a lot of those sort of older Victorians there that have. Um some of the similar grading changes that we're we're dealing with, you know, on uh this this property. Um you'll also, you know, relative relative to the grading, I did uh, you know, uh there's some um. You know, some challenges, uh you know, this plan represents sort of like, you know, taking that first floor at the highest point of the site. Um and um uh the other thing that you might hear about tonight is uh some comments about building height. There was an earlier plan here showing sort of like the context of this footprint relative to the neighborhood. There's a lot of data on that plan, and one of the things that we have on that plan is the the proposed height of this peak height. Relative to the abutting structures, we had a surveyor go through and, you know, uh through the uh. You know, the height of some of the abutting structures, and we compared it to what we're posing here, and this is roughly, you know, kind of four to six feet. Uh um lower than some of those abutting structures. And in order to figure that, you know, determine that, one of the things that I had to do, and again, this is very, very early on, there's a lot of work that has to happen here. In order to bring this project along, but we had to do sort of a conceptual site section. So in order to arrive at that height that I that I had to make some assumptions on floor-to-floor heights, ceiling heights. And uh I uh measured that height from mean natural grade, not the proposed grade. And that's not how we, here in Newport, we're uh we measure from the the zoning ordinances from from um. Just from grade, not mean natural grade, so if there's some concerns about us elevating the site, you know. You know, you take away some of these grading changes and the retaining walls, we're still under, we're gonna be under uh the required building height. You know, uh for this particular parcel, so uh imposing, you know, I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to be part of this project, it's a high-profile, very important. occasion, it needs to be great, you know, at a minimum, it needs to be very good. And uh you know, I'm very confident that um this plan before you tonight is the right thing for this, you know, for this parcel. And um you know, I think it has the opportunity to be great, thank you.
Good, thank you. So um I will now open it up to public comment. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Stephanie Neketich, ninety-three High Street, I live next door um to the abandoned gas station. And I'm, there is a lot of things I could say um about this project. Including that I think all of the butters understood that uh R three change would be needed to. Bring this site back to residential, so that's, I don't think that's ever been a big um vote of contention with us. But I'm I'm going to speak tonight in support of two written comments. One, Jared Eigerman's comment on zoning. And two, the comment by Novak Neketich, my husband, on the site plan and engineering aspects of this project. His comment reinforces Jared's recommendations for site plan and peer review under zoning. And while I understand that the ZBA can always ask for peer review, I I'm not sure I've ever seen them do it. So it's nice to have uh a requirement such as I believe there is in the D O D for some things, a requirement for peer review. Both of those written comments came came late, uh and I'm concerned that you haven't had time to read them. But the city's development agreement also came late, just yesterday at three P M. And it contains some surprises for butters, especially that it is not a contingency for rezoning the property to R three. We had understood from the planning office where we spoke to you, Director Ford, that this would be the case. I think there's a big difference in saying it is unlikely something will happen if it's discretionary, and saying it will not happen. And this is uh this this is so important, that if this deal were to fall through, if this project were to fall through. And this were already rezoned, the R three, it could become many things besides this unless. It's tied to a development agreement like this, so that's our concern. If you change it to R three, this project doesn't happen, and now a new buyer comes along and wants to do something entirely different. And we no longer have these restrictions on what can be done in it, on this particular uh at this particular corner. And I think Jared's point um about spot zoning had more to do with that. So he's the lawyer, I'm not, but I really do think it's important to consider everything he wrote to you. I think it's also uh difficult for something this important to come in, the development agreement. So late before this hearing, and you might want to consider continuing. So that the public and you and all counselors have more of a chance to consider the development agreement relative to uh the zoning. In the meantime, I want to thank Scott Brown and his client for the time Scott has spent with the butters discussing the plans. Uh he's been very open to us, um. We have um had very good discussions about this, including just yesterday. And one of the things that we did was go through some additional things that he penciled in on that drawing, but now this is part of a development agreement. So it seems to be hitting the concrete stage um pretty quickly. So finally, this is a hundred-year opportunity to restore a very prominent corner of High Street to residential use. And we do think that it's um the city should make sure that it is done right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments, yes, come up for you. State your name and address. Please state your name and address.
My name's Martin Sal, I live at one of nine State Street, which is the, I'm up the other direction of Butter. And um I I do wanna thank um. Um Scott for consulting with us when he was um bringing up plans, he was very helpful, see. You know, instead of me just peeking out the window and saying, hmm, what's going on over there, but um it um. I I am certainly all for putting residential usage on that corner. And um I'd also like to thank you for bringing it to the council and to the planning board um so quickly. Um and appreciate you spending time on it. Um mildly, you know, in the last couple days, the only thing that's happened though is I had a couple questions about. Again, the contin-, you know, the idea of a contingency plan, if the plan fell through and it's already zoned R three. What would the result of that be? Um I tried reading through some of the. Um definitions and can, you know, what's allowed in different districts. It, you know, that it was great to me, I could follow some of it. And so I hope that you guys are wise enough to figure out. Um you know, to protect that corner and make sure that it goes through. That um you can understand the um possibilities of it not. I don't know, having this, watching out for the safety of having a good development. And um I guess that that's my only other concern, the unintended consequences of changing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Will Barrett from uh one twelve High Street, right across the street. And a fantastic presentation on the history of the zone, thank you very much for that, and uh. I just have a couple concerns on. The uh setback on the High Street side. That is a very busy intersection, um I'm a civil engineer by trade, and uh so uh I know that that road is not. Legal with, so um you know, that it's that tight area that um. And the site distances, if that if that building was so close to High Street, that that was gonna cause. More problems, we are listening to uh people go down the wrong road all the time and uh. Beeping and honking, and I don't think that's gonna, you know, that building so close is gonna help that situation at all. So I am a little concerned with that, and uh I am concerned with the uh the double. Building idea a little bit, you know, the lot size is a, you know, a third of a normal lot. And now we're putting two buildings on it instead of just one, so you know. And when you look at the building compared to the other buildings in the neighborhood. Um it's a little bit more massive in comparison to the ones uh nearby, and uh. If you're looking at the setback on High Street, if you go down High Street, all the buildings are. And if you're looking at the setback on High Street, if you go down High Street, all the buildings are really far back. And, and that one is right tied up against it. So I'm just a little bit concerned about that. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I also want to speak, of course, public comment. In case we close the public comment period and bring it back to the council and attorney board. And discussion. There's may have discussion points.
Question. Yes, so I'm thinking, I'm wondering if representative or the developer could talk a little bit more about how invested they are in that project? Maybe to relay some of the concerns of the abutters and, you know, likelihood of going through with the project. And start with that, maybe you could talk a little bit about, you know, what are the restrictions if it were a developer? What kind of peer review already we have and how that might look? Would you like?
First question to the.
To attorney.
Well, Scott, you've been working on this how many months?
Four, five.
So Scott's been doing this design four or five months. I've been working on it for three or four months because it was before the summer. The developer who doesn't yet even own the property and only has a purchase and sale agreement has spent tens of thousands of dollars so far to get to here. He's pretty invested in making this happen. So his goal, and he's continued to work with Global to make sure the PNS is extended along the way to make sure that this development can happen. So I don't know how to, somebody that doesn't really care is not going to spend the kind of money that he's done. Or take the time to let his architect work with the neighbors to.
So do you have a question for?
All right, well, counsel press. Counselor Preston?
Yes, thank you. First, let me apologize for not being there in person tonight. I, I, circumstances beyond my control. So I had a question about the timeline. So I am feeling some urgency on this. But, you know, as Attorney Me just spoke, you know, they've been working on this for three to four months for herself, four to five months on design. The DA was just signed yesterday. And it, but I'm also feeling this sense of urgency. Can someone help me understand the timeline to push, at the very least, this ordinance through?
So the developer's under a purchase and sale agreement. And I can't speak to the exact details of that because I don't represent the developer on the sale or the purchase of it. However, I do know that if the zoning doesn't pass, if he doesn't know that in short order, Global's going to move forward and do something else. So he needs to know if this is going to happen and if this is a project he's going to be able to do on this site. Because if it's not, and the zoning's not going to pass, he's going to stop spending money and Global's going to decide what else they're going to do. So, I mean, it's, it's a commercial transaction in a hot real estate market with interest rates and construction costs doing all kinds of crazy things. So that's, that's the urgency to know that it's going to happen.
Thank you. If I may, rather than walking away, but, you know, so I understand that. But at the same token, you know, this obviously, you know, making zoning changes at a very prominent location in the city, you know, in, in very short order, you know, I do feel a obligation to be certain that we have had ample opportunity for the public to comment. And again, the DA was just signed yesterday. And, you know, I'm not sure everyone has really had an opportunity to see that. So, so I in particular have some hesitancy to move this forward tonight in particular. But can you give me a sense of, you know, what the timeframe, what is sort of, and I'm not looking for actual dates. But, you know, is there a job dead on this? And if so, is that December, is that January? You know, where, where does that stand? I, and let me just note that I do want to see this happen. I want to see this move forward. But I want to make sure that we've had ample opportunity for the residents of Newburyport to weigh in on this. Thank you.
Sure. So the development agreement has the end of January as having the zoning passed. You know, the city council, the planning board have their own processes. So if this doesn't get taken care of in this council cycle, it's got to be all refiled and renoticed and done all over again in January. Is that not true?
Or at the very least carried over to the next level.
Right, right. So the development agreement does have the end of January. Counsel press.
Thank you. That answers my question.
So Andy, I guess the question of Charlie was, again, yeah, with respect to, maybe this is the beginning, with respect to the contingency question. Obviously, we could not, usually would be a development agreement with a particular developer who's not the owner of the property, et cetera. So, so there is, so this particular developer at this particular time is bound to essentially substantial compliance with that concept if the zoning passes. But I hear from the neighbors that there's concern that that's not as affirmative. Is it possible to, to pull out some of those, some of the standards in the, in the relevant and make them a contingency on a zoning event?
So I think unless, it wasn't entirely clear from Mr. Eigerman's email when he, when he commented on this, I got the email related to this meeting. But whether the suggestion here is that somehow we have something recorded and running with the land as opposed to with the party here, I mean, there are trying to put in for a, where you're making a map change and then saying, this map change, you know, it is an R3 district, we're making a map change here for R3. But we're going to have various particular requirements for this site that's different than the rest of your R3 district. That would be pretty acceptable, I would say, and might in some ways, and you might have some discrepancies, that's spot zoning. But so it's, you know, here, it's, you know, there's a fair amount of detail that's being given upfront here that you wouldn't normally have. If the zoning was still R3 from before, you'd still see a project like this potentially happening. But you wouldn't have all that detail upfront. You'd have all the detail being reviewed essentially before the zoning law appeals. And in this case, you know, again, just in fairness, what I'm aware of, there's a fair amount of upfront information here that none of us would all have sort of locked down in some way. And again, recognizing that, you know, this will ask what it's going to do with the potential buyers, what it's going to do. But it certainly seems like there's interest in pursuing this BCA as proposed. And, and I think, you know, as Charlie indicated, the planning board, the zoning law appeals, both can hire consultants as needed. Should they have any concerns, those hearings can be postponed or continued, I should say, to resolve issues. Take further and look at consultants to come with that junk information. There's not, and it's not like a variance where there's a very fixed amount of time they have to act on something. If they are unsatisfied and something's been unresolved, they can continue the hearing. They can also reject the application as far as, you know, detrimental in a problem. So in essence, I'm not myself concerned that the board, whether it's the planning board or the zoning law appeals, that there is sufficient latitude there, you know, and there could be debate about which board someone wants somebody to go to or whether to go to both boards. You know, in some cases, we talked about street line permitting, whether that's onerous, since somebody is shooting the board simultaneously, where they might have differences, they didn't go back and forth. But, you know, it's not apparent to me that there's any less leverage for the zoning law appeal to review. There's more than less ability on their part to get consultants as needed. It's not a particularly large project in the city in the sense that, you know, the whole scale sort of subdivision or site interview. It's not apparent to me that something substantial would be gained during that process that couldn't already be achieved essentially through the special permit process and a greater leverage, I would say, if you were to threaten any special permit. The ability to say no to a special permit to me is in some way stronger and preferable than the site interview process, which assumes that the use is not a question, that it's really just working out some detail involved in that. So.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add one other thing. So I forgot, of course, about all the engineering that has gone into this. And so I'm reminded by the developer's representative that he's actually spent over $50,000 already just to get to this point and get the details necessary to do the comparisons of everything around it and the property itself. Their goal is to be in front of the zoning board. If this were passed before December, to be in front of the zoning board in February. Because they want to close and start building this summer. So that's, that's the, that's the rush, if you will, is to get it done and get in front of the zoning board. So that, that gives you better context.
And my, my question was really not so much about that as trying to explore the response to the questions that have come out.
It's not apparent to me, how mechanically, what mechanically would we put it in? How would we put it and not have it be essentially, you know, it's a disparate treatment for the parcel rather than the R3, right? So that's one of the things I was thinking about. With respect to the neighbor's question, the abutters question, when we were asked to review this, we were asked to review edits to the zoning. You know, this particular story, right? And so I was thinking, this is more accommodative to the city of Newburyport than it is to this particular buyer. And so it just is an opportune time to actually address this so that we could perhaps correct the correctness exists on that particular corner. So that's how I was looking at it, not necessarily as in favor of a particular buyer, but in favor of the site.
I guess a follow-up question. Again, not, I don't have a strong feeling about this, but the issue that, and a couple of, at least one comment has been here. And again, it's all speculative. The idea that this development may not go through is all speculative. But the concern about, as you mentioned, retail sales, services, that sort of thing. Is it possible to, to limit this to residential use?
I mean, we'd have to put something in there. And again, it's that question of, are we, we talking about within the R3 designation of this, you know, change of this area? Then specifying that, and how are we specifying that basically only in the corner of High Street and State Street and R3? You know, it's, that's a very particular sort of restriction. I, I mean, I'll just say, just speaking only for myself, that if, if this year were to come through and the R3 would be in place and the zoning law appeals were to get an application for something, you know, the R3 is in place, and someone wants to do something similar here. But it's not the plan we're talking about. I would be very inclined probably to be saying to both them and to the zoning law appeals. And I think this, or something akin to this, is probably what would be appropriate for the site. Rather than, and I certainly would not be in favor of, I would be advocating against any of the traffic generating, commercially used, retail services or trade use. To me, would not be an appropriate use there. Again, I can't speak for our voluntary board. They have to decide, you know, their own, they have their own jurisdiction, rightly so. But I would not make any decision to approve that. And I would recommend against a, a use of that type here. And I think for good reason, the board could similarly find that it's not appropriate use here. Not, not to say that zoning, the council hasn't, you know, reasonably considered that as a possible path for someone in the R3 district, given it's close proximity to downtown. However, at this location, particularly close to the intersection of High Street and State Street, I would not want to encourage any of these uses. And I would hope that they would listen to both myself and I'm sure the abutters and others. And I feel pretty confident the zoning law appeals would take that into account, considering whether or not to allow my special permit multi-family residential versus allowing about any other use by special permit that might be more commercially natured, which didn't even document it for this location. So.
Other questions from counselors or time rooms, Jamie?
Yeah, I believe our zoning administrator, co-enforcement officer had some comments. Unless she feels like it's been addressed, she's always enlightening. I'd love to know what she was thinking.
It was largely addressed by Attorney Me's presentation at the beginning, but to Counsel McCallie's question at the beginning. And have we looked at some of the R3 elsewhere in the city? And the answer is yes, we have. Much of the R3 has lot sizes that are not adequate for new multifamily or some of these other use developments. Like she said, they're 20,000 square feet, 120 feet of frontage. They just don't exist, most of the places, and most of the lots are already developed. If someone were to try and use one of these undersized lots, it would not only have to go through a special permit process or whatever the use is, but also the second layer of a special permit for non-conformities. So I, while I appreciate all of the questions, it is definitely something that the Office of Planning and Development does before we even, you know, work with the people who are bringing these ordinances forward. So I did want to touch on those as a matter of just point of fact. Again, 40% lot coverage. So as we talk about what might be possible on this site, should this, you know, this particular development agreement not happen? I think a lot of limitations still exist within the R3. You've got a maximum, you know, density and things like that. You've got the setbacks. We have a lot of controllable place. But we have the benefit right now of having worked with, you know, having the abutters work with this development agreement. So that's a benefit. But the point of fact was just the dimensional controls will limit any potential future.
I just want to go back to earlier discussion about whether aspects of the development agreement could, could be incorporated into the zoning for this particular site so that it is protected. If this deal were to fall through and you still have that structured influence for future development. Could be an overlay to the zoning, if there are planned development agreements of some kind. But isn't there a way to incorporate the important language of the development agreement into the zoning?
There, that can mechanically be done further. I guess it's a little bit kind of on how complicated do we think things need to be in order to achieve the reserve we're looking for, right? And how much of the debate do we have to have about, does this, does this particular parcel area need special treatment compared to the rest of your R3? You know, in light of what Jennifer had said and what I had said, what, you know, what you had spoken to. You know, is that something we need to layer on top of this? And, you know, we could talk about adding stipulations here and then arguing that that's, you know, not a spot zoning, but it's necessary in this location for, you know, no purpose. And, you know, there could be a conversation about whether or not there's, you know, it's having to talk to Global about having something forwarded that runs with the property that has a similar nature, right? As opposed to something that's in this particular party. But I guess I can always speak on that. I'm not necessarily convinced that that is necessary here. But I understand if there's some desire about that, that is something easily to talk about. Whether you want to incorporate in this map change with part or some particulars. And then, yeah, those could be, you know, structurally, yeah, those could be inserted there.
Like those same concerns would come up if there was no future development. For sure, you'd still want to push it in the same direction. And it seems to me that this, this site has unusual prominence in the R3 district. And might warrant a cycle in some way.
Do you, and I don't, if, if more to further the term, what particular, or is it, you know, fully in a cap? Is, you know, what things are, what are the desired stipulations if we go here that might not work for the rest of the area per se? So I think you have to be careful about seeing out this particular parcel. Because the more you single it out, the more likely it is to be found to be spot zoning if it was ever, if it was ever brought to court to decide that. I, I think that, that frankly, this is spot zoning. We're just talking about this site. The fact that it's the rest of R3 minimizes or diminishes the specific zoning that's going on for this particular project. So I think it's important that we, that we keep the R3 as broad as it can be. And this parcel to fit within the R3. The more specific spatial conditions we place on it, you run the risk that, that a court might find that it is, you know, spot zoning or this specific benefit being placed on this that wouldn't be on any other parcel.
Press for comments.
I actually was going to say exactly what the at-large counselor said. One of the things in our realm of zoning and tomorrow evening, there's going to be a discussion as well related to housing and affordable housing and the concept of R3 and the more restrictive or the more, you know, we're talking about specific design elements or like the, the spot zoning. It's not going to serve us better as we get the big picture of the city and what R3 really means. And trying to really hone in on the aspects to new development, but to be mindful of what we can, knowing special permit is a key part of it. So there is that element for um, hearing from the butters, for having that, that process in place. Let's not restrict it anymore. That doesn't mind me, thank you.
So if I could, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I have a suggestion that might get people over this one.
Okay.
Um, so I don't necessarily disagree that you have to be really careful if you're going to. Then allow one parcel to have a particular restriction. And it seems to me that what I'm hearing, the biggest concern is that we don't want retail service or retail sales here, right? So that's one of the, aside from everything we've committed to, I think that that in, in this particular location, it would be a bad idea. And I think most people would agree that in the R three district on High Street. It would be a bad idea to have retail sales or retail services. And so if you drop the footnote. Under this use for any R three zoning on High Street. That they could not have R three sales or R three services. You can accomplish what you need to accomplish without singling out this parcel. But limiting this parcel to not being able to do retail sales or retail services.
I, I just, I would have no exception to that. I think that's very reasonable and logical in a, a land use planning perspective. And it doesn't create this huge inconsistency or sort of spot zoning because I just, again, I'm speaking like myself and I do agree with Council Rights, you know, comments. And Council comments coming to that. Um, that being said, I think it might address one of the concerns like Bob asked, but that's one that I think. It has a, as a justifiable basis. It's easily understood, I think, and could be more easily inserted in there without having a, you know, a huge amount of debate about disparity in the R three district. When around, uh, which is, uh, I guess.
I, I, I'm worried about that one because we haven't notified uh, the property owners. Um, well, the affected, affected property owners that we're going to be changing your zoning. So um, I, I, I guess I, I have very little concern about, and, and I don't have a strong feeling about. Making any of the changes I've been asking you about. But um, I don't have any concern at all about spot zoning because the, the. First of all, spot zoning at the edge of a zoning district is, is something that never happens. It's something if you're, if you're moving a parcel from one zoning district to the adjacent zoning district. That's almost could never be considered spot zoning. It's just, it's just not what spot zoning is. And also, any restriction you put on it to make it more consistent with the surrounding properties would not be spot zoning. So if you, if you were, and, and I'm not, again, I'm not advocating for it, I'm just exploring it. But if you put a restriction on this, saying it could only be residential, then there not be spots on it because you're making it consistent with it. Um, so I, I would rather not get into that stuff, but I, I'm just trying to explore, you know, responses to. What we've heard from butters. I um, you know, I, I would not want to get into a situation where we're expanding. The restrictions that we're talking about.
Further.
To other properties that haven't been notified properly.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or? Discussion? Yes.
I just have a question. What is the actual, now that the lots have merged, what is the actual address? Is this a High Street address or a State Street?
The parcels still have separate addresses right now. These other topics, however, for zoning purposes, they're merged, meaning. They, they have to stay together to qualify, to, to satisfy zoning requirements.
Won't this project have one address?
The, the units will all be given individual addresses once the, yeah, that, that property.
Will they be a High Street?
That's up to the assessors. That, that's going to be, we do what the assessors want. It, between the assessors and E nine one one, they get together and they say, here's the address, here are the unit numbers.
Yeah, they'll eventually have an updated set of.
Reason I ask is because to follow Attorney Mee's point, if it was stated that as High Street. This could not be commercial, and so the High Street property, wouldn't it just be easier for everyone to understand? Where, whereas to her point, if, if R three said can. Cannot be commercial on High Street, but all of a sudden this, this property had a State Street address. I just didn't know if that was gonna.
Oh, I think what she's referring to is any property that has a job.
Running on High Street, but I am, I have to say, this is what happens when you make sausage and. So um, but the, the, the chair had a really good point that if you changed that, dropped that footnote. And didn't notify any other property owner essentially in the R three on High Street. They would have a claim that there was improper notice for the zoning change. So the chair's is, it's true. I mean, he's, he's accurate on that. I would be concerned about that change.
I have a question about this site itself. Does it have a environmental clean bill out to construct?
So, uh, um, I don't, there, there's currently an AUL on it. Um, however, part of the process is for that AUL.
Could you explain what AUL is?
Excuse me, an activity and use limitation. Um, but that, part of that is to be that, that's going to be closed out. So that residential use can be used somehow. But there's a deed restriction to follow related to any excavation, which.
If, if I may elaborate, and I, yeah, I, only because we got some of that information, you know, through global. But my understanding is it wasn't so much that they found something that it was an examiner, they were concerned about so much as they were concerned about future liability. And the reason for prohibiting it in future basements was not because there was something they discovered, like a kind of face with sex, when they felt that something had to be cleaned up. That was still there, but rather than they just wanted to prevent, I don't know, help with the suspenders of all the projects. They still wanted to make any no basements.
Yeah, and my question was really relative to the timing of approval and construction.
Oh, yeah, no.
So those things come up at any time, but.
There's not anything on there that will present that, no.
Yes, Councilor, go on.
Yeah, so I just, um, I just kind of have a comment going to go toward uh, the council committee as well as I do. Um. Um, I, I, I'm unsure how we sign the development agreement. With um, an entity that doesn't control the property, uh, granted as a PNS, they can name well on it. And we're rushing to adapt zoning to it. Um. Uh, to, to this. I, I think this, I think many of the concerns. Um, expressed today, uh, the, the zoning on the R three, the zoning amendments of the R three, I think is denied. Uh, to a certain degree in the, the, the thought. I think a lot of the concerns that are with it really are amendments to the development agreement. Uh, and the amendments to the development agreement, you know, are, uh, can, you know, our, our zoning approval is also contingent. Upon completion of purchase and sale, uh, removal of the A well. Uh, all of those types of things that uh, would give up the guarantee. That if we make this change, that um, it, it's a two-way guarantee. Because that's how we agree that it's a one-way guarantee. When we do this, then the developer um, can uh, make a digital set. And so I, I, I'd ask us to consider maybe some uh, amendments that are supportive of the development agreement. Yet list out some of the concerns that were noted, not only in public comment, but also. Planning board comments as well about how we um, either move the better for, for our load there.
I have a question. It's, so I, I assume the, the development agreement has been reviewed by a council, uh, the city council?
Correct, yeah. We, we sent it over to Carrie Dorr, and she, she reviewed it, uh, and approved it under the form with some revisions. Uh, there were some adjustments to her initial language, but then ended to clarify some areas that she was concerned about referencing, since the fact that. Understood that it was a total of appeal and review that hadn't been done after, but that was a process. There were other details that were put in there, but it reviewed, approved it as a form. Uh, and added the burden that was brought to the mayor. Uh, we did also consult her to determine whether that's something that had to go to the council versus, you know, if it was a desire to bear to. Execute that, you know, the contract and by that is, uh, recognizing that that only works if the zoning change happens and where else is that more of that piece of it. But um, again, that was sufficient to sort of, uh, do that, she, she did shine in on that.
Uh, a- any um, any comments or have we asked? In zoning related questions to council in the dark to making this change?
Uh, we had a much of the specific area you're asking about. We did discuss the, the range of issues involved here with her, uh, you know, that are, of your designation, whether it's spot zoning. We had discussions with her about the range of things that were, were discussed in the, in the area. This one, yeah. She generally had a seat on what's happening here and was involved in the mechanics of, again, the particular area of her site.
I was proud to have her hand up.
Council President?
Sorry, I never lowered it earlier.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, so she's familiar with the, uh, the overall team of things, some of the considerations, you know, that even the, the other things that were raised by us for the council. And then plenty more that, you know, one of the ramifications also there was a lot of this for that area as well.
Um, so I, i- i- if the chair will allow, um, as far as the city council's process and timeline goes. Um. We have the ability to vote to move this into the next session. So um, it doesn't die, if, if, you know, as long as everyone supports doing it, which I don't think there'd be. Any issues with moving this forward to the next session. So that's just a procedural thing on, on our part where, where we could pick this up with the new council, uh, provided you vote in favor of doing that. So uh, I think that still keeps us on relatively on the timeline that we would need to have beyond in order to uh, to meet. The requirements of the um, development agreement.
Then we give you, I think, two meetings in January in addition to the rest of this year. Do you have four meetings in total, let's say, between now and January thirty first?
I think that gives us, gives us sufficient time for additional public comment or um, additional work to be done by the council. We can go to the same agenda.
So, do we have sixty, do they have sixty days after our closing our hearing? Was it?
Ninety.
It's ninety, okay. So we, we could close it tonight. It would be able to be January thirty first, definitely.
Yes.
Any other questions before we?
Say what you said again.
No, we, uh, I, I can never remember the dates. Um, the council has ninety days from the day that we close our hearing. And give them, to do, to actually enact the zoning order. We have to be open to hearing. And I couldn't remember, sixty, I was going to ask to postpone till our next meeting.
So we just, um, just for my, for my own, um. Uh, clarity. So we, we've got one more city council meeting in November. Uh, yeah, then we've got one in December, correct? Right? So for us to kind of do a first and a second meeting. Miraculously, the waters parted and we wanted to kind of do it, um. It's possible, but that's highly unlikely. You know, if, we would, we need to wait for the planning board's report or, or lack thereof. For, I think you don't have to give us a report. I think you have twenty days.
Yeah, you've got, we've got a day.
Yeah, you're getting a month of, of waiting to, uh, to do what happens.
So, so it's better for us to give you a.
Yeah, and a- again, I mean, just from my own, my own personal view and, you know, the chair, but that certainly doesn't. Go ahead, any more work than anybody else. Um, there's just been a lot of new information in the last couple of days. The letters are, are all, um. Uh, you know, there's a lot to consider there, you know, and as well as the, the development agreement itself.
Um, and apologies on that front, by the way. We certainly would have pushed that out sooner. We, they were still with Harris, having needed to review it and so were the workouts and the details. We weren't, we didn't feel it was any condition to send that.
Yeah, 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 no, it's, 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 in some ways, this is kind of simple, but in some ways, it's complicated. And I think because of the complications, you know, the unintended consequences to be thought through and. You know, and for me, the, the whole six C piece and any connection with that, it would be good to, you know, see in writing if you're. Able to cover that in, in the, in the back door.
Six C connection, you mean the, the question is, so why we're, we're looking at the potential of two buildings, residential buildings?
Yeah, I mean, i- i- is, is there, is there um, a relation between what we're doing and six C or there is two?
So, um. You know, we, we had, we had discussions about this and, you know, my preference, you know, in the absence of, I don't, there's no, there's no. Necessary reason to do it this way. My preference would have had to have done at the planning board in the special permit, grant the authority. Because it's very similar to succeed and for some of the reasons other people talked about it, too. Um, familiarity with site planner, he's the designer, and that's what I think. Um, I guess I was convinced by the planning director that we, you know, for a limited number of cases, this is something. It would help for the city to quickly adopt. So um, I don't think there's a conflict at all between this and six C. I think we've, um, we have, by making the amendment, the language amendment that is on the screen right now. Uh, I, that, that resolved any issue that I had with, because without that language, there would have been a conflict with six C. And now I think there's a conflict. Well, in that case, um.
All right, is that going to be in your report that you guys write?
I can.
Can you include that?
Yes. I will, I will, I will, uh, so I guess the best thing, but that's. I would move to close our public hearing. I would accept a motion to, to close our public hearing. Is that a rule? Yes, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
I, I.
Thank you. So our hearing is closed. We can move on to deliberations on, on our report.
Sure.
Um, I don't know what you wanted, whether the, the planning development committee would like to. Close your public hearing or leave it?
I, I think we'd probably close it with the ninety days. Uh, we'd get us, we, you know, end of January, we'd still be able to do it. Um, that's, we're half months away. Um. Kind of factor in, and have further meetings, not, not a public hearing, but um. Open meetings, where certainly we would hear a public comment and then, then kind of bring us in for lending.
I'm sorry, so does that mean you, you, if you as a committee could meet again to take into account the language before, before, yeah, but, but close the public.
So thinking about timing, um. There's a lot, there's gone on tonight, and I don't think that I can write a report on the, on the fly tonight.
There's no expectation, no.
So which would mean that you would not have something in time for your November meeting. Because our next meeting is the sixth.
Correct.
So I, I would like to have a draft report that I could write and have the board review it and discuss it and vote and approve it on the sixth. Which would mean that then you would be passing your, your discussion on to the next council.
Yeah, I think that sounds good.
Okay, we can, we can make that uh, happen. Move to the next session, yeah.
So, thank you. So do you want to, do you want to go to close?
Yeah, is there, I know, so Councilor Wright is making a motion to close our portion of the public hearing. Is there a second? Um, all those in favor? I think we do a roll call again for remote. So, uh, Council President?
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Uh, Council Camera, yes. So we will close our portion of the joint public hearing and uh. If you're going to deliberate, well, uh, well, we, we can stay and listen to you. We, we, we haven't adjourned our meeting, but um.
So I guess that's the next question. Do you feel like there's information that you would like to have incorporated in the report? And there's a first piece. And second, do you feel like you're ready to vote on a recommendation that would be incorporated into the report? I could accept a motion one way or the other, or any number of ways on the, on the proposed zoning amendment.
So for example, a motion to accept as uh, created, to recommend as, as created and.
And then we can discuss that and discuss, should we go for it?
I made that motion. Uh, I'm sorry, if I could just, uh, just add for clarification, if we're recommending the originally submitted version, the docket. And for the, as, uh, potentially as a better version this evening that was suggested, if that's.
Wait, an motion to the uh, version as, I mean, it's.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and second on the floor, um. Could we talk about what you would like to have in the report? Uh, we've already talked about clarifying the relationship to um, six C. Anything else that, that, I mean, I can, I will draft what seems to make sense from the discussion back. If there's anything that particularly you would like to have included in the report before we, we go on this. Anything else that, I can, I will draft what seems to make sense from the discussion that, if there's anything that particularly you would like to have included in the report before we, we go on this. You personally, please.
The only question I would have is, there was discussion about simulating R three and what would, what would happen in other parcels, and I know it was covered as a, a discussion about, there's only so many lots and there were only so much nature, that it, it wouldn't have an impact, but I should think it reflected somehow in writing, maybe with a table or a map or.
So the report is speaking to the limited scope of impacts?
I call it a simulation, but it's however you, however.
We could get the information.
Sure, sure.
Will you speak to six C?
Yes. This could be a much simpler report than our last one. Okay, if there was no further discussion, yes, Brian?
There are, there are metrics that were discussed here, they've been relative to current R three requirements that are particularly, this thing, block coverage, open area, block size. Somehow all of those need to be acknowledged.
Knowing that the technical deficiency is that reliable? Yeah, right, yeah.
So basically looking at the dimensional standards for high street residential versus R three, as applied to the site.
And others in.
Well, I think for the, this is really for resoning of this particular course. There's nothing else, all those in favor of motion, you say?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, so we will get a, I'll bring that back to the board, the number six meeting, we're discussing, then we'll get official pass on.
Okay, make a motion to close our committee, a motion to adjourn? Okay, paid by councilor Wright, councilor Preston? Second, all those in favor, councilor Preston?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yeah.
Cameron, yes, so we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we've already addressed item three on the agenda, you are in general business now, and item eight is a request for timely release of security for your resort, the Dashoff Farm, and that has also been, that's the, 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 the seven.
Go back to the, we got both of this and the, just three games.
Okay, could I have a motion to continue for a, to R three on the seventh set?
So move.
My second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Right.
Thank you, the others? Okay, we're up to C B C representative.
I, I know as well, we're getting out of the place that for now, it's time for other things on the press. Yeah, don't forget, we have to write our C B C representative, through the city council, we'll play this.
So, you know, when I, when I spoke with you, John, months ago, you thought that like something you might be interested in, community preservation, you probably forgot that discussion.
I did not.
Art, would you still be interested in, in, in doing that?
Uh, yes.
Would. Did you also, somebody else discussed that?
No.
Wasn't that?
I have, I'm, I'm related to, to Jen, sorry.
Well, you're willing, then we don't need to vote it, this is somebody who.
No, that's quite right, I'll, I'll communicate with the mayor's office, we'll get somebody to the council, and they should have that, what I mean, you'll have to do, unfortunately, what might happen is the city council, I have a committee meeting in which you're at to come in and, even though you've already been appointed to this board, you know, it's, it's a little silly in my view, because you're already appointed to one board, but you have to be appointed also to that board. So effectively, the good thing about this timing here is that we can cycle you minutes such that you're able to look at the applications that are gonna be looked at by the C B C early next year, because the applications are due in December, so effectively, we're pushing about, you know, sort of in January and doing a review early in the year, early than we used to do. So it's great, I was gonna do the jump like anywhere, I think, or maybe not, we're doing the regular, so. They only, it's really only like three heavy meetings in the spring, basically, for this, and after that for the rest of years, so like, it's been not much we have to do, so that's, that's great, thank you.
Okay, I didn't foresee a pool of myths, I did not have an opportunity to review these, the K and the seven.
Yeah.
If the purpose to our next meeting. Although I did notice a lot. Discussion story.
On that note, if you don't mind, so we review these, these minutes from the last meeting, we're supposed to provide any edits, clarifications?
Yeah, I did just. Yeah, you were doing, lies? I do, yeah. So, if you feel, yeah, you can go through, you're just, it's not a lot of, just go through it.
Branders.
So. Just send it over to Caitlin.
Okay.
Okay, discussion story, I mean, resoning and N B T A moves.
I don't know if I have any more on that, other than that Caitlin and I did have a discussion with yesterday, we worked with M H P, Matthew, side of the partnership about, I don't, we certainly had a, 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 I think in N B T C about this budget, a little follow up on something called the economic feasibility analysis, that the state expects to essentially justify why we think a twenty five percent affordability requirement in like in our four yard district is a reasonable way to maintain essentially well, trying to comply with their N B T A communities, zoning requirements, which is a new layer, it's a different set of standards, it's a slightly different, so that also, it requires us to basically, it's a little bit, I think we have to have a little bit of a discussion with the former department of housing and development, which has been renamed unfortunately, to executive office of housing and living communities, for some reason they had to change it. So we'll be discussing with them, we hope necessity of having a consult report that we're spending, you know, ten thousand dollars on, you know, to justify why essentially bingo has been able to do twenty five percent affordability of the projects and we want to maintain that potentially here or elsewhere, while satisfying N B T A communities as opposed to being forced to bring our threshold down to ten percent only in the district, which is not as profitable for the city, I would say, for various reasons we do, but, but that's not as good for us, I think it maintains the twenty five percent threshold we have. So I would want to maintain that, so it comes down to potentially spending some money or working with E kind assistance, you know, through both regional planning agencies, but more importantly, mass housing, we talked with them about a couple of consultants they have available to assist with that and some other communities who are, you know, getting underway, they're close to the point, so. Other than mentioning the fact that that's important here potentially for us, because we want to maintain that, you know, without losing, I don't think, I think that's headed this way.
You wouldn't lose it as long as we weren't touching that district.
Well, that's right, so I, that's part of my concern is just, is just making sure that both of the specters exist, we just, more importantly, other areas outside of that, that we're touching anything else. If we try to have outside our district, forty yard district, the twenty five percent requirement, the basis of state has said you can't do that, and what we need to do is ask for something higher, the, I would note though, that even with that, and you can tell me if you disagree, but I think their guidelines make it pretty clear that even if we were to try to do something outside the forty yard district, and not utilize that, but to say, do a twenty percent, so twenty something percent of our L, we can only go up to twenty percent. We can't actually go outside that up to twenty five, they won't, even if you make an argument to go up from ten percent, you can only go up to twenty, can't go up to twenty five. So it, it's like we said, and if you want to maintain the twenty five percent we have in our district, the forty yard district, and the benefits we get out of that, but we, in going higher potentially elsewhere than just before of ten percent, which doesn't really get us any gain for our housing inventory, it really just makes even for any developer who's coming in for their project, they're only giving us the bare minimum ten percent for their own project, so they're making even, they're not making it any worse, but they're not really helping up for their overall housing inventory, so ideally, we want to go higher than that and, you know, twenty five percent is what we got, is the biggest bang for our buck in our forty yard district so far.
So if, if we couldn't, if we were stuck at ten percent?
Yeah.
We, that would be for, as a right projects.
Right.
But if, but we would be able to back our zoning so that we could give a density bonus for somebody who would want to twenty five percent.
Yes, right, because there are choices becoming that.
So we could, so that, if we gave enough, if we, if we set our cap for the N B T A communities at the, at the cap that we have to set in that.
And then give a density bonus.
And give a substantial enough density bonus to make it worthwhile, but then give them twenty five percent.
And then, of course, you know, they're drawing the boundary of the district and, you know, and it becomes, you know, are we, you know, what are we getting, like, is it the right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we get some more company.
Yeah.
Is this bingo project on route one, Haley's, is that, is that included with your calculations already, is it embedded or is it, it's an addition?
It's part of our base, really.
It's part of our forty yard base, I mean, the state is looking at just area you've sewn to comply. The important part about bingo projects in the forty yard district thus far is that because they're all at twenty five percent, it's counting towards our substantial housing inventory in a much better way, than, far better way than if we had done just twenty percent. We get credit for all hundred percent of the units in the building on our substantial housing inventory, if we got anywhere else based on this N B T A stuff, anywhere else we zone, to qualify for N B T A communities, we'll never get that hundred percent, they, then we've gotten out of the forty yard district thus far, we did that very conscious years ago, and we got the biggest bang for our buck, split the substantial housing inventory thus far, and it's unfortunate that we're basically told we can't do that to say, you know, outside N B T A communities. It's one of the reasons why I would not want to lose that here.
What's the A M I threshold, because you can also qualify all rental units towards the inventory if it's twenty percent and fifty percent A M I?
They have, their N B T A community stuff is at eighty percent.
So they're at eighty percent, so you couldn't even do fifty percent? No, it's hard to do, not many developers want to do it, but I'm just wondering if it's.
Yeah, I mean, they basically use the standard eighty percent as.
I mean, you probably could get that as a more true, but.
Cause you, yeah, cause that would qualify the whole project.
I mean, you can give somebody the option if they wanted to do it, and say that's a bonus, but I, for the baseline, you can't mandate the fifty percent, like, you can mandate sixty percent A M I, you couldn't do that, because it qualifies, you have to do just the eight percent. It's a convoluted set of state rate.
So it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a housing production program, it's not an affordable cost.
Yeah, exactly, it's a housing market saturation program, you're not a global housing production program. So the idea is that they just create enough units regardless of whether they're due district in any way, they form, that they then bring down the prices because there's so much competition, because there's so few units. We'll see whether that can, that we're on, and it becomes true, a new great point, but that's the assumption they had, is that they just saturate the market, but there's no units that are happy, right?
Not that I disagree with, it's also a ridership production program.
It is, it is, it is, it's a, it's a two for one by the state, right?
What is the status of consultant selection for story?
Just getting, like I said, in June, they're just getting going on that, yeah.
And timelines and everything?
I would like to, by the year end, you know, close the above that, so we can really get them going.
And you're thinking of two separate consultant? The, the, the infrastructure one for the.
Well, the infrastructure piece, I actually, I saw that the council referred the public services to the administration, but I really felt like that should be just a tad on to the consultants that we already work with, because they're, their infrastructure, our, our, it seems almost, so they're gonna bring in another consultant, they actually have to have three consultants who work on water, and then issues with designing things. But that being the case, I sort of don't agree anymore, and they have to be, be familiarized themselves and everything, so I'd rather start with the ones who's already familiar with our calculations of, you know, gallons per day, draw it out, what we're allowed to do, or might be able to do just what the capacity, and then work on that. So on that front, however, the, the two consultants I'm more particularly interested in, actually, I'm in some ways more interested in the visualization consultants, assistance that I have in the zoning portion consultant, I rather that I talk to them, but mainly because I feel like we can have our discussion about what we think needs to be tweaked about, say, using a forty yard template, we had a lot of comps that, you know, from the forty yard district, the story out of the area, the questions have become, if we're gonna use the same framework, what changes, onward with that, so I'm actually less concerned in some ways about the consultant being assisted up in that piece than I am about visualizing for the communities, so I don't get, you know, all about just a lot of how people really understand the benefits of the challenges we're making, they can see what that looks like, I think that really helps us here, we haven't really put, in recent years, when we talked about zoning, like, when we did the forty yard district, the previous work, which I'm prior to my time here for the forty yard area, because the transfer development kind of thing, they, they did some original nation meds, you know, sketches and things like that, but there was nothing done with the recent forty yard, it was all fun that were appropriate to that, so it would be great to have something to help, you know, separate agency, now, for instance, I keep, like, we look at the intersection with Low Street and Story Avenue, and you see the institution there, and CBS has kind of contributed some little to that, but only partially can drive through there, so, but the institution is a good sort of landmark example, you say, look, this is kind of representative of what this corner should look like, and, you know, the area, the buildings up against the streets, you've got decent architecture for done, that's the kind of setting the stage there, that's not residential, but I think that what we want to do is kind of give somebody a before and after visual of a couple of vantage points, then maybe go to all teams, and say, this is what it would look like, you know, it's not gonna be the final plan, but this is the way it would look like. I really feel like that's very, gonna be very helpful to us here, not necessarily we don't need some more assistance on the zoning end of it, but, but I think that's actually in some ways, could be more useful, because some of that other ground we can actually cover through our local stations to some degree, so I think, again, that's just my thing, but. So for, for those of you who have architectural backgrounds, or like, those, you know, like, you've worked at various events before, you've worked at various events before, I think, you're always working on some, like, ones that would be good to work with us on the sort of, you know, visualization, could be remodeling, but, you know, at least some sort of comparative renderings. If you have any suggestions, would love to.
Well, that is the kind of thing that you can get interns or B A C student, Boston Architectural College students for, I mean, it's not this zoning expertise you're looking for, you're just looking for the graphics.
Yeah, I mean, we could give them some direction as to what's needed there, so, and again, if that's a suggestion right there, doing something that could be a sperm other than the, you know, that end of it. Here, the assumption is that there, you know, there's funds available, there's grant, that we could be paying someone, you know, to do it, but again, whether someone's volunteering, whether they're doing, through that, and then get, you know, pay some money if they're available, that could go for a better price. I, I think, you know, I'm not wedded to any particular party for that, I'm more interested in the final result, that they would give us, that something that presents well, that, you know, that gives us visualization that says, this is the corner, that feels like a two way corner they're arriving, and doesn't, you know, show us the, because we're in from a certain mall, you know, something a little bit closer to what we're seeing now, starting to happen in the forty yard district, you know, or in the story avenue area, we don't have any visualization for that.
So part of this is confusing to me, and I've been looking more at as I'm driving about this rezoning. And I love it, I think it's all very important, it's gonna be beautiful, but the thing that's confusing to me is that once the zoning is allocated to this area, that the building should be a certain way, we have to wait until each building transfers ownership or asks to renovate or.
Just like the forty yard district, we adopt the zoning, but we're still beholden to the private developers, your owners, that may say, I would lose all my sites, so, you know, came out vacant, so there's some interest in doing that one more quickly, I'm sure, than other places.
Okay, all right.
But the N B T A site, you know, for instance, that was low hanging fruit, it was a parking lot, the state was interested in mobilizing it, whereas if you look at the other side of the train station, where there's an office, art, you know, sort of, at some point, someone's gonna say, look, there's a bigger bank for my buck here, but I'll be residential, but it's also a question of, you know, who's got leases, you know, what's the timeframe of that, what's, you know, rates, you know. So arguably, at some point, someone's gonna say, a five store building next to the train station, our retention is way better than, you know, and, and that, it's kind of that kind of thing, so we're still, we're still dependent on them, because we don't, if it was brown school.
Like, if you pass this, and it could take fifteen years for Dunkin' Donuts to say, I want to do something, or Molten Say, so it would just be like a slower process of.
That's right.
Okay, okay, okay.
But the state wants us to adopt the, for N B T A communities at least, it doesn't have to be, Story Avenue doesn't have to be for N B T A communities, but the state wants us to, or requires us to adopt whatever changes we're doing to satisfy N B T A communities by December of, of, of thirty first of next year.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to remind you of that, okay.
So the, the, you've allocated, your grant allocation, allocated funding in three markets.
But we can also move that.
You can move it.
Yeah, they're not, they're not as worried about that.
So if you were to, if you were to go to, what I'm, I was, I'm thinking, I was to go to an existing consultant for the infrastructure piece, maybe it's gonna be five thousand, basically.
That was exactly my point, it's like, we should not be a heavy wood, because essentially, if I get on the map and I say, look, we're, we're thinking about ballpark, let's be conservative, add a little bit to it, you know, this number of units potentially added to the story avenue area, and this number of units, you know, beside the like forty yard district, this order of unit being added based on N B T A communities, throw that on the map, putting aside all the infrastructure between, show us that our treatment plans can handle, you know, that flow, that the passive flow, recognizing that we also serve two other communities, and that's another thing we gotta consider here, right, we've got these relationships, and, you know, contractual relationships, minimal agreements, but less maneuver, and maneuver, that'd be contemplated too. And any development that might be associated with that, but all this complexity combined, I think, you know, back and say, look, we, we can provide the water and the treatment, and we also have blubber, you know, because, you know, some blubber, or, you know, droughts, or, you know, other unexpected contingencies, then we could basically then say, not that the state isn't still requiring us to make changes for N B T A communities, but they don't, these institutions are acknowledged, yeah, we know they're my nature there. Then we could basically then say, not that the state isn't still requiring us to make changes for MBTA communities, but, um, they don't, they seem to have acknowledged, yeah, we know they're making sure they're, you know, something else, but, um, but at least we can flag that now, if we see something going awry, and I, quite frankly, just as a planner, aside from Blueberry Board, just to play, right, it's not really sustainable, they keep saying we're just going to keep adding housing, you know, we can't build indefinitely out of our problems, right? There's just a limited amount of resources, you know, land, water, it's, you know, you can't do it indefinitely. And so the idea of just, you know, building out the saturation of markets somewhere, yeah, that's great for that, maybe it'd work, but we also run into, we just can't provide enough water for it, we can't treat enough water for it, you know, you know, et cetera, so, um, unfortunately.
Services, you know, schools.
Yeah, yeah.
Capacity.
Yeah.
School, there are many.
Yeah.
You know, at at I think maximum.
Yeah, I mean, indefinite growth, regardless of whether the ring board is not sustainable, actually, and, you know, the the idea, the the term of smart growth is a little bit kind of a you know, contradiction in itself, right, that you you can't grow indefinitely, so.
Um. So is there anything more to talk about on that? So just looking ahead, um. First of all, tomorrow night, we have the housing forum here, it's six o'clock.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If anybody's interested in six, uh.
Sorry, I should have mentioned that, that was my line.
It's back in the, uh, recorded for people who can't.
Um, my understanding is it will not be, uh, court immediately or they checked in on that, I don't think they're going to be able to do that, um, yeah, so.
Um, so our next meeting, which is, uh, December sixth, we have a couple of things we postponed, three things we postponed, right?
Yeah.
Uh. The lower Athens in common and Dastar Farm and the report on the, uh, zoning. We also have three applications. The total would be, I think, four or five special permits.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know, good for you, those of you who might have conflicts to go and see if you have conflicts or know, you know, what the needs are for the association.
This is the sixth.
Is the sixth, yeah.
Yeah, especially, I mean, not every member, the chair is always thinking of this, not every woman, everybody thinks of the, it sometimes comes in that just the question of do we have enough people for a meeting, but it also becomes relevant, not only to the board, but also sometimes to the applicants, because if there's like just barely enough people to vote in favor of something, they might sometimes say, look, I'll just have to continue, it's because they'd rather make sure there's at least a buffer, you know, of other members, so that's helpful for us to know in advance, if possible, the chair and the office, because we can plan ahead and try to make sure that things are running smoothly, we're not all just wasting time, so.
And are we allowed, in that, say, the issue with that, are we allowed to, uh, attend via?
We don't have to attend here, if I had you, we need to vote for the vote.
Oh, yeah.
Propose, yeah, yeah.
Whatever reason.
You provide, yes.
Yeah, 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 as long as, yeah, again, less like for some of you, you missed the private hearing, you listened to the recording, yeah, you can, you can vote remotely, okay, yeah, yeah.
Uh, but that actually raises a lot of.
That is another, yeah.
Which we talked about, which is, which is that, you know, there's been some concern about remote participation by others in planning board members. Planning board members, I think, is perfectly reasonable to, if you can't, we're here to attend remotely, um, you know, on an unusual situation. You know, if you're a vacation in Japan or something. But, um, but we've been talking about possibly limiting, um, other people participating remotely. We've had some real difficult, um, meetings in the past few months with not being able to hear a, an engineer working for an applicant at the back, and, and so I just, I don't think it's very helpful. Um, the applicants particularly participating remotely.
I agree.
So, yeah, I I would add that, so there's only one of the fields discussed last night, actually, um, and there, they had talked about basically like in January, they wanted to start basically saying, look, as, you know, in, starting in January, uh, to kind of finish out the year, starting in January, nobody is doing anything remote other than listening into the meeting. Um, I actually want to circle back with them because Rick and I had a conversation, I think that where Rick and I, I think came out was a little bit probably probable. Which is, uh, they went so far as to say, like, no, we don't even think, uh, like our own board members or, you know, like, they hadn't contemplated, for instance, like, what if our legal counsel can't be here, but we want them to participate, they can't, they're there remotely. Are we really going to preclude them from, like, is that really in our best interest to preclude them? So, well, we might think it's bad to have, well, remote public comment, and we make that clear to the public that they want to comment, they have to come here, that's, you know, it's a policy you guys can make, you know. Um, partly based on still having an added equipment and all that kind of stuff, they want to do that, but, um, it might kind of relieve, relieve some pressures, but I also would think if we're going to maintain any kind of remote fees, we probably want to at least maintain ability for board members if necessary. I get out the first US chair of board members, but I would want to maintain flexibility for the board members, for legal counsel, for the, for the cities officials, they don't think it might be a good thing. To me, that would be silly to preclude ourselves from doing it. Uh, I recognize why things like zoom bombing or applicants presenting and not being able to hear things inherently and all that is is an issue, and I might want to draw the line with that, but uh, I would be concerned about taking away flexibility you have for yourself, the officials, and that'd be beneficial to this process, so.
I got the part, the burden of the hearing, right, you have to, if it just.
Exactly, exactly, it makes it that much harder.
Drop out of it, slanting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, so, that's the sort of the sixth, the sixth is going to be a full meeting.
So even with the, uh, because we, previously, we had contemplated whether or not the act consent and peace should be continued to the, the, uh, twentieth.
Right, so, so that's a good question, so we, uh, have you talked to Kim about that?
Well, we had not, uh, Caitlin had reached out to her, uh, we had a conversation and we weren't able to get an answer back from her. Uh, when I, when I was leaving, I was closing out the conversation with Caitlin, she was going to relay her, look, it's probably something your investors anyway, because you're going to be sitting there probably the other night, whatever, they're not taking it up. So we wouldn't have closed it up completely, I don't frankly think it's going to make a whole lot of difference to them, so if you, you know, frankly, that went to the toy, I don't know if that's necessarily a real deal, um, but.
Yeah, so the other, the other thing is going on, just thinking ahead toward meetings, our first January meeting would be on January third.
Right.
And so, um, we're kind of, we're trying to think about whether we can cancel that. Um, and so we'll make that decision on the sixth, uh, based on whether any new applications have come in, that really seem time pressing. Uh, you know, if somebody comes in with an application that doesn't have a lot of pressure, the staff can talk to the applicant. Push them off to the, push them off to the, you know, seventeenth, what it is, um, because it'd be nice to have to do it right after New Year's. Um, but we also have to think about what we're going to do about talking about kind of a zoning workshop at some point.
Correct.
Um, we talked about doing that in January. I'm just not sure, I think we should, we can talk about that on the sixth, I'll.
Yeah, I think we talked before, you and I should have all right, we should, we should touch base on the sixth.
Yeah, yeah, so, so on the sixth, we're going to be definitely doing, unless there's a question postponed, it's three special permits. Three, uh, three applications with special permits, one of the first. Three or four special permits, it's part of the, it's like, so, um, and then maybe we can convince Kim to move to the twentieth. We definitely have to do the, um, the vote on our report for the zone that we discussed tonight. And probably Dastar Farms can be quick one, right?
Uh, yeah, I would think so at this point, uh, assuming that it's in order, it should be pretty quick, because Bill would have been in proposal at that point, and once he does, I would think we're out here. We haven't brought it to you and said, ready, and that's a, because they haven't satisfied, so yet, we said, you're not ready yet, so, um, I guess the, I think we're going to the assumption right now that the twentieth isn't an issue for folks in December generally, we have enough people in the meeting planned, right, so. Um, I I think it makes sense for us to relay to Kim now, it probably makes sense to just.
That would, I would suggest.
That way you're, you don't have pressure that night to do so much on one night, okay.
Um, and also, we don't have requirement for two days.
Correct.
So, so, so half of us can take all of these early.
So regarding the attendance for the sixth, do you think there's going to be a similar question about attendance on the twentieth, like if any of these get postponed from the sixth to twentieth, because I know it won't be at the twentieth. Is that, it'd be hard maybe here on the twentieth.
What are the, what are the applications?
But I can't be here to say.
One of them is the pickleball.
Yeah, three fifty high, four new pasture, uh, one twenty-four high. Oh, we have it, oh, it's in there.
That one, that one.
I I and I was so busy doing other stuff when I sat and told him to tell him to make that, so, yeah.
My goodness.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
I have to reduce myself. Yeah.
Okay. That's an easy one, because it's not a.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, that's very, yeah, that's, yeah.
Um, so four new pasture is brewery.
Correct, yeah.
Um, that's just to, to. Can pick a ball.
For it.
Yeah, well, that's great.
And three fifty high and one twenty-four high are, um, additions, right, to to existing houses. Uh, one, one of them is a conversion of, one of them is creating a new unit, turning it.
Yeah, one's a six, six D, one is a six C, yeah.
So maybe that's three fifty high. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, six C is the, um, three fifty high.
Yeah, I think we can, I don't think they're going to be.
I don't think so, no.
Any other questions or anything you'd like to bring up for discussion?
Oh, uh, sorry, one minute, no, uh, for a minute, I think, um, citizen planner training collaborative, um, the, they do train periodically, um, various members have been, you know, gone to these things over the years, they usually help in other towns, and so the question is, if you drive there, you know, we pay basically about twenty bucks a piece, you know, person to go to these things, and it gives you some training, a bunch of things, you know, could be, the topic of the night could be roles and responsibilities of planning board, of, of, of the field members, site plan review, subdivision review, you know, things like that. Um, so they have specific topics, as I said, something out basically, you know, letting you know when, you know, some of these things are available, we had a conversation with the administration about just, because we, we, some of the funds that we used to have are no longer available to our department, so it's nice to do some stuff, so utilizing one of their accounts to, uh, to make sure we can transfer our board members if you are doing it. The other thing I talked about, what I'm interested in doing is having them come to, say, city hall or senior center and doing something specifically for us and picking a topic, so. Um, I can circle back to this and, uh, certainly talk a bit more about this, but the, um, question of which session or topic that they typically do would be beneficial, or more one or two, I was thinking like one or two in the coming months, you know, that's why I took these. They come here, they do a presentation for us, anybody who's able to, if it becomes easier for you because of your, um, and we say, you know, putting a hundred dollars, but they come and do a presentation that's, you know, for us. And so if you have thoughts on what you're interested in, and we can talk about it, you know, but, um.
I think there's like one, this rules and responsibilities of planning boards.
Yeah.
And one is waiting to fence the zoning.
Exactly, like, that's a good one right there, you know, I mean, you don't love that stuff, but we can understand the kind of stuff, but, you know, well, you know, that, it's stuff like that, so if you have any preferences, let us know, otherwise, we might come back and say, look, this is what we'd like to do, or this one that's available coming up, you know, which.
So is there a schedule on, for example?
Um, yeah, they, 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 they revolve them essentially, so they had like some volume, um, they're rolling them with a new set, so, but I actually, in, in, in some ways, I'm actually more interested in seeing if they can do one here for us, uh, and picking a topic or two topics that are good for us, you know, in the coming months, and just having them come and do it. Because I think more people do it, it's typically going down like one or two people who are all going, you know, and I'd rather have something here where all of them, so you're able to at least, you know, get close to our community, for the, and so.
Yeah, I think site plan review would be a good site plan review, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think you can bear it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, something else I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Will you come in here?
I'll second that.
Any other seconds, I'll look there.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.